Morning.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good morning, everyone. Welcome. Today is Monday, April 10th. This is our weekly county commissioner meeting. At this time, I please ask everyone to rise and follow me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, it looks like we've got a pretty full day today. Um, there's no additions or changes to the agenda. I entertain a motion to approve.
We approve the agenda for April 10th.
Second. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We'll get running into our agenda. The next item is an action item. These are the claims, the border claims. I didn't see any junior college.
No junior college.
No junior college. Well, this time we'll open up for questions for Rita.
Got a couple of questions. First of all, the seventy-seven hundred dollars in tax deed title searches?
There was a whole bunch of them.
So Flying Resort Ranches, was that more than one or all the seventy-seven hundred went?
The flying S?
It's, well, it says Flying Resort Ranches was the name, the vendor name.
Oh.
We get all that reimbursed, though, when they come in to pay.
Oh.
Or if we auction, end up auctioning them off, we'll get all that back.
All that back, okay.
It's all reimbursed.
I just couldn't figure out what the name on it was, if that was just like one beatern on.
Treasurer DeFork could probably answer that question a little bit better than we can.
They're all different addresses.
Okay.
That are on there.
Those were all just title searches?
Oh, there's a whole list of them.
I'm reading. The question I had was, and correct me if I'm wrong, but now we have converted the sheriff's department over to AT&T phones, correct?
This is their final reimbursement.
Okay, that was my question. That's the last one. But the MTDs are going to stay on Verizon?
As far as I know.
Okay.
And then Rita, under solid waste?
Mm-hmm.
Says Murphy's contracts for-
Credit cards.
Credit card. Is that per month? We pay twenty-two hundred per month?
At the transfer station, excuse me, everybody has a charge, but the transfer station has a large one. They don't accept anything but credit cards and checks, so.
Oh, that's true.
So they reimburse the county, the treasurer for it.
So we get those fees back. What are we paying a fee of twenty-two hundred dollars for?
There's a, uh-
Is it per transaction?
Credit card transaction fee.
I wonder if we should bid that? I mean, that's expensive. Twenty-three hundred dollars?
Well, I know. We used to take cash, and we decided we better stop doing that because we're setting those people up for trouble. So we went to check in credit card over, and we talked about trying to add another buck or two to it to recover those fees, and it was a-
There's a percentage.
It was hard to keep track of all that.
Yeah, and every office that takes cards is charged that fee. It just so happens that Solid Waste is the one that reimburses the county for their portion of it because of the number of transactions.
Okay, so what I'm hearing you say then is even though we pay this twenty-two hundred dollars, we get those funds back in a general fund somewhere else?
We don't.
We don't, huh?
That's the cost of operating the credit card machine up at the Murph.
Yeah, that needs to be kept.
It's a third-party company that runs those for us. I don't know all of it. Uh, Johanna probably could do a better job of explaining it all.
Isn't that three percent? That should be passed on to the public, though, shouldn't it?
They're paying it. That's why it's being reimbursed to the treasurer's office.
We do get reimbursed.
No, we're not, we're not putting that charge on to the individuals using a credit card. It's just, it's a convenience, I guess, that we're allowing the individuals to use credit cards since there's no other option, and the Murph pays that fee. That-
It's a convenience fee.
It just comes out of general fund for the Murph.
Twenty-six thousand a year just basically is paid by the-
By Solid Waste transfers.
Solid Waste.
That's correct.
Uh, we need to change that.
And I guess you could-
It just feels like it's, that's pretty expensive, but.
It is a convenience, I understand.
It is, and you could argue that individuals that are paying the Solid Waste fee on their property taxes, those, that's being used. I mean, you could make that argument.
I was just surprised. I didn't remember seeing that pass.
Yeah, he pays it every month.
No?
No, I hadn't.
Wheels are spinning, just thinking.
Uh-oh. Put on the brakes there.
I'm gonna have a discussion on it.
You might talk to Scott about it.
Okay, any more questions for Rita? If not, I would entertain a motion to pay the claims and the board orders. I'll make motion to accept the claims and board orders.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Where's my stamp?
You didn't ask for that.
I didn't ask for stamp? That's over there cheating.
It might be a little frightening of having, having all three of us have a stamp. Might not be a positive or a wise decision.
Thank you, Rita. Thanks, Rita. Have a great day. We're gonna move right on down the list into elected officials. First one up is Assessor Sue. Good morning.
Good morning. How was everybody's Easter?
I ate too much. Survived another one.
Absolutely.
I got sunburnt.
Yeah.
Everybody sees you.
We got to go meet our new granddaughter and watch our grandson play a couple of games of baseball in Caldwell. Everybody got a little bit of sun. It was nice. So, um, House Bill 292, uh, did go through, and the State Tax Commission is, um, working diligently on drafting a guidance document, um, that they will email out to all the county officials, and they're also working on temporary administrative rule, specifically for House Bill 292. They will be presenting that temporary rule to their commissioners at their meeting on April 25th, and it will be printed in the administrative bulletin, and they are going to make it retroactive back to January 1st of '23 of this year. So, um, it's gonna be kind of all hands on deck. Sandy Bones is working diligently on all the programming issues, you know, to make all this go into effect smoothly. And that's probably at the forefront right now.
So could you give us kind of a rough, did they raise homeowners? Did they raise circuit breaker? What's-
I won't know until they have everything in that document.
They put the March date back in, goals.
It's not the governor vetoed that, so it went back.
Mm-hmm.
They overrode his veto.
Are they gonna, so then are they still paying off all the school bonds and, you know?
I, I think that's the intent. I'll be glad when they publish something, because there were so many things that went back and forth, and I, it's confusing. So it'll be nice to see the final version. So, um, our cutoff date for 2023 changes, uh, is gonna be May 17th, and DeeDee will start her certification process then, and then we intend to have all the assessment notices in the mail, uh, by Friday, June 2nd.
Do you have a kind of a guess of what we're looking at in the-
So it looks like land in some areas went, came down a little bit, uh, and the improvements came up a little bit. So there's, there's not gonna be a lot of change in the assessed values, a little bit to fine tune. Um, but there isn't, shouldn't be any large jumps or plummet's, so.
And then which area are you appraising this year?
We'll be in Donley doing reappraisal this summer.
Could you, um, give us some ideas, too, about what dates you want us to reserve for BLE to make sure we're in town?
I actually have a note here to ask you guys about, uh, June 28th, 29th, and 30th.
What's for me? Think I'm gonna be sick those days.
No, you're not. It's in your contract.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty. Does that work for everybody?
That works for me.
We'll make it.
Okay, so that's a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, and then if we are, if we do need additional days, I was hoping, I don't know if July 3rd is gonna work for you guys or not, it's a Monday. Um, you may have commissioners that day. Tuesday's the holiday by four, so maybe look at the 5th, 6th, and 7th to finish up if we need it.
Can we start at eight in the morning? Is that too early?
Uh, no, we can-
Why don't we wait and see how many we got before we set that?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted you to kind of tentatively set those dates aside on the second week. I'm sure we'll need all the 28th, 29th, and 30th for sure.
We do? I'm new at this, so do we do that with public coming in, or is this just us and you?
Uh, no, it's open to the public.
It's open to everybody.
Mm-hmm, and some people want a, um, personal appearance. They wanna come before you. Um, a lot of them don't care to come in personally, you know, they send in their documentation.
Okay.
Either way, we present it to you guys.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have to be adjourned by July 10th, which is the following Monday.
We don't get vacations during those times. That's what Sue's telling us right now.
Just, I just thought I'd get on your calendar ahead of time.
It's written down here. Um, Sue, do we have to down the road officially as an action item vote those dates in so you can advertise that? Or do you just, how does that work?
So what we'll do, commissioners, is we will put it on as an action item, that the commissioners will be setting those dates. Uh, if we can do that next week, I apologize, I was unaware that this request was gonna be made today, um, but we can put it on-
I wasn't sure when they wanted to know. I'm sorry, I guess I should have asked.
No worries. Uh, we can put it on an upcoming agenda for the commissioners to approve those dates for Board of Equalization. Uh, we're, we have enough time to, um, to make that determination.
Yeah, we've been through it before, and we'll do it again.
Every year.
So excited. It's a race between that and going to the dentist. I'm not sure which one I enjoy more.
Do you guys have any other questions for me?
Don't think so.
Okay, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sue.
Mr. Miller.
Commissioners, good morning. Uh, today we have district court, uh, so we will be, um, running district court today. Magistrate Judge Adam Dingoldine is in Boise for a conference, so he will be attending, uh, the magistrate judicial conference this week. Um, so that's the courts. Uh, we have begun, I think I shared this with you the last time I presented our initial meetings with elected officials and department heads, obtaining their budget request for fiscal year 2024, and what we're planning on doing after our initial meeting with all of them. We'll be putting workshops on the commissioners' agenda probably, uh, the fourth week of April, just to begin the, um, workshops with the commissioners, and then we'll have, uh, probably weekly budget workshops with the elected officials and department heads until our public hearing, which is scheduled for August 28th.
Notice he never asked us to meet with him? Just, I'm harassing.
That's okay.
What's, what's our budget request?
What we typically do for the commissioners is do that, um, with all of you. So that's our, our plan is to do those, the ones that-
It has to be an open meeting. That's right.
Correct. The ones that, the budgets that are specifically for the commissioners, the 0105, 0118, uh, we'll meet directly with the commissioners during the workshops for those. Uh, the letters have been sent out to the taxing districts regarding the need to have their budget hearing dates to our office by April 30th. Once we have all of those compiled, we provide those to the assessor, and the assessor sends those, uh, public hearing dates out to, during their assessment notices. Uh, so just to get, just to inform you of the processes, um, they, the taxing districts have to have those public hearing dates to our office by April 30th, and then we provide those to the assessors. If there's any taxing district that does not comply with that, uh, part of the Idaho code, then we do send notice to the State Tax Commission, and unfortunately, there is a penalty, um, that's applied where they don't receive a portion of their sales tax dollars if they don't provide us with the, the notices of their public hearings. But typically, we do have all of the taxing districts that provide us with their, uh, public hearing dates by the April 30th. But those notices have been sent out, uh, to all the taxing districts, and we're, um, have begun receiving the responses.
I have a question for you on that.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked Nicole to look into, we received a, a form, and I think you did too, that says that part of our taxing districts are non-compliant. I didn't know what that looked like. I asked her to talk to you about that.
For the registry.
For the registry. So does that impact their ability to, I mean, if they're non-compliant with the registry, can they actually ask for tax funds?
So they can only levy for what they levied the prior year. If they are non-compliant, they cannot increase their budget, uh, request, that three percent in new construction. They have to levy for what they levied last year if they are not complying with the requirements to report, uh, to the Legislative Services Office.
Oh, okay.
All of our taxing districts are in compliance. If our taxing districts are out of compliance, I make personal contact with them, explain to them the process, provide them with the contact information for the Legislative Services Office. So as of right now, the taxing districts that are within Valley County are in compliance.
It looked like there was a couple of irrigation districts that were questioned, so I don't know, but.
So the only one that I saw on there that was, is a Squaw Creek or Squaw Valley, and that one's a little bit interesting because they're in multiple jurisdictions, um, and, uh, they are still required to provide the information to the Legislative Services Office.
Thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
And just so you know, that starts, that Seachan Reservoir is the start of Squaw Creek Irrigation District, and then goes into Gen County. But Seachan is in Valley County this way. It's their reservoir. Um, and so you're the enforcement as far as those folks getting that done?
Yes. Technically, it's the commissioners, uh, but it's another responsibility that the clerk's office takes on, um, to make sure that the taxing districts are in compliance with that requirement.
Nicole was questioning, and so was I, so she's gonna ask you about it.
Okay, no worries.
And you have an action item?
I do have an action item on the agenda, commissioners. Uh, the commissioners need to set the polling location for the upcoming May 16th election. I would like to share with you that there are a hundred and two registered voters in the Roseberry District that have, that are eligible to vote in this upcoming election. Typically, the Roseberry District would vote in, uh, the Donley Bible Church, but we've decided just to, uh, consolidate them and request that they, um, come and cast their vote in Cascade, or of course, they can vote absentee. If the commissioners do approve this, we will be sending a letter out to those a hundred and two registered voters that would have the ability to vote in this upcoming election for the Cascade Memorial Hospital and the Cascade Rule Fire District.
And that would be at the Legion?
That would be at the American Legion in Cascade, yes, sir.
And that's the motion you need?
That is correct, to designate, uh, that polling location as the location for this upcoming election on May 16th.
So I'll go ahead and make the motion that we use the American Legion as the polling place for the upcoming 2023 spring elections. Second, I'll second that. Move to second on favor, please say aye.
Can I ask a question first?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sure, sorry.
So do you feel like that we're inhibiting their ability to vote at all with that? Because if they are elderly, there isn't, you know, I mean, the bus service between here and there might be difficult.
What we would also be doing, Commissioner Moppin, is including in our letter an absentee application-
Okay.
So they would be able to have the ability to submit that absentee application to our office as well.
I just wanna make sure that they will have the ability, so.
And this is for the election that's, has to do around Cascade?
It, it does. It, but some of the Roseberry District is within that, uh, tax coding area for them to be able to vote in this election as well. Okay.
And remember, did we vote on that?
No, not yet.
So we got a motion in a second on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Hey, anything else?
That's all I have, commissioners.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, our next one is, uh, Mr. Oki.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, busy time of year. As, uh, Clerk Miller mentioned, uh, today's district court day, so prosecutor is, uh, busy in court this morning. Um, I do have an action item. Uh, the findings of fact conclusions of law for Falconer was in your packet on Thursday, and the, uh, if you found that acceptable, uh, for your signatures, it's, uh, there, there for your consideration.
Before you sign it?
I read it, so.
I should have got it online.
I think I read that.
It should have been Wednesday, uh, Wednesday when I sent, well, whenever the clerk's office sent that packet around. It should have been in your packet, so.
So I'll make the motion, we go ahead and sign the facts and conclusions of law and order for the appeal of CUP for the solar panels of 505, Callahan View Road.
A second.
Move to second on favor.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And you want today's date?
Please. Yeah. Uh, a, a couple of issues as you're signing that to, uh, bring to the attention of the board. Um, you know, when we had, uh, contract training, uh, two months ago, we talked about making some adjustments to the cover sheet. I have a, an idea for proposal, uh, and, and maybe some feedback from you where you have, you have some ideas. There's been a, a couple of instances where we have, uh, where my office has been asked to, to develop and draft a lease. The most recent is with the office, office lease in the YCAP building. Uh, some logistical issues. I mean, I draft the lease, but I don't necessarily consider or follow through on some of the logistical issues, like who's gonna be responsible for managing that lease once it, once it's signed, who does the tenant call with questions or concerns and, and those kinds of things. So I may just adjust that cover sheet when we do bring that to your attention or for our proposal, that those issues have, need to be part of that cover sheet, that whoever is asking for that lease will have at least, uh, have a plan in place. So when we do communicate with the tenant, this is, this is the contact person that you need to call if you have, if you need the carpet cleaned, or if you have issues about rent, or whatever it is. But when we have, you know, when, when we're, we're bringing on tenants in, in our buildings, there, there needs to be that infrastructure, that plan in place, and I, I'm not necessarily considering or thinking that, and, and so we need to, we need to address that. So I think, uh, for the most part, we've got this one covered, but, uh, maybe just a little bit more detail on those types of agreements that you will be seeing in a cover sheet when it comes in front of you, and maybe that'll prompt you to ask questions as well about how, how that's gonna work and how, how we're gonna manage those things going forward, so.
I guess, Brian, the only thing I could say is that I would assume buildings and grounds would be the manager of the lease.
Well, and that's, I, those are the things we should be discussing and working out before we get too far down the road, uh, is, is that the case, is buildings and grounds, is Scott gonna be responsible for that? Is he aware of that obligation? And, you know, and then, of course, you know, keeping those department heads in the loop will, will help with that coordination, uh, going forward, and, and you can get the feedback from them specifically if they have concerns about that, so.
And then you did built in a 30-day get-out clause.
Yeah, yeah, yes, um.
With that, with that thought in mind, is buildings and grounds, you know, I mean, is Scott appropriately, um, staffed for that? But more importantly, there was a comment a week ago or two weeks ago that, you know, normally governmental entities have a contract individual on staff. And so I'm questioning, you know, is it time to look at that versus staffing in buildings and grounds?
What do you mean a contract person?
Something that handles all of the contracts, makes sure everything is, you know, put into action and is being followed correctly.
More like enforcement.
Yeah, well.
Over, over the last couple of years, I, I've seen those kinds of things grow within the county, within the county system. We have, you know, we have employee housing that have tenants that are gonna come and go. We now have a tenant in, uh, in the YCAP building that's leasing office space. We may be bringing more of those things on, and, and so, and that, and that's really the, the purpose behind me bringing this to your attention is think about the infrastructure and the logistical, uh, needs that those are going to, the, the demands that that's gonna place on somebody within, uh, within the system. I think historically, the clerk has been asked to do a lot of that work, and, and certainly collecting the rent and, and handling the financial side of that is, you know, maybe a natural fit. But as more and more of these, uh, more and more of these things come online, that will have an impact. I, what I would predict would be in the clerk's office and in buildings, uh, facilities for, for your standard maintenance. And, and then we also need to take into consideration the, that we have a contract for janitorial services, but these, these aren't necessarily within, within the scope of that janitorial contract. So we need to at least be considering those, uh, those issues as well as we add those things on. Uh, those things need to be run, kind of run to ground, and, and with this particular one, there really wasn't anybody assigned to do that. And I think that there was, there was an assumption that, that I was gonna consider that or do that, but, but that wasn't within really what my mindset was. I was, I was just drafting the lease was, was the task that I was, had taken on. So, um, I wanna just kind of plant that seed, keep that in the front of, uh, in the front of this board for consideration, and we'll make some adjustments on that cover sheet to remind all of us that those things need to be discussed and addressed, uh, addressed right up front. I think this one's fairly straightforward. It's not gonna be a very complicated one, but there may be some more complicated, uh, uh, lease agreements that will be coming our way, uh, in the future, so.
But I'm just thinking, as HR turns over and we get somebody new in there, you know, who is managing the leases for the-
Well, we've asked him to do like the fair, any fair ground usage. I think, you know, I personally think we ought to ask Scott, see if he's interested. If it's a problem or an issue, if he says no, easy peasy, then.
Right.
And it's not only just leases, it's contracts also, which right now Brian's office is handling, but as we get to the point where they become more, um, they're just annual renewals, I don't know that that's out of your office, or is that, you know, I think we need to start thinking about-
Right.
How we're gonna handle not only leases but contracts, and who does that, and at what level we need to have that.
That, and see, that is not, that is not something that I anticipated would be a responsibility that I would take on, that I would, would manage the contract or manage the lease where, when it comes time for renegotiation, renewal, that, that I would take the lead, because that's, that traditionally, that's not a role that the prosecutor's office could or should play, um, for, for a lot of different reasons. I'm not trying to push that off onto somebody else, but if, you know, we, you're an attorney, you live in worst-case scenarios, and so if we ever do have an eviction issue or something like that, I, I, I don't wanna wear two hats. I wanna represent the county, advocate for what's in the best interest of the county, and give you legal advice, but not also at the same time have to interact with and, and, and wear the landlord hat, because, you know, landlords do a lot of things. Uh, they, you know, they, they have to fix, fix leaky faucets and clean carpets and, and, and at, from time to time, they do have to evict tenants that are not following the rules, and, and that can, uh, that can be a lot of work depending on the kind of scenario that you're, you're considering. So as, as more of these things come your way for consideration, keep that in mind. I think it's, uh, I, you know, I would encourage you, and I think it's a good thing, a professional courtesy to, to, when Scott is up here, to give his presentation, to give him an opportunity to give, give you his perspective and, and the clerk's office and other, other department heads that, or elected officials that may be impacted, uh, impacted by those issues. And, and, you know, I think among, among the, the county family, we can figure out a good, a good plan. As long as you have a plan, then, uh, then we all kind of know what, what our roles are going forward, so. So anyway, that's, that's item number one. As, as I had promised, we'll focus on doing monthly trainings this month. We've talked about some, some brush up training or, or some training on public records. Have been out of the office for a couple of days, but now that I'm back, keep your eye out for an email from me that will have a proposed public records policy. The goal of the training will be to review the policy. We're going to talk about, you know, whatever questions people have about public records requests that they've received, how to handle them, what concerns or questions they have. But I also want to get the policy circulated around so we can have a discussion about that. What I was, what I would propose and would recommend is that we have a, a policy that's universally applied throughout the county. So, so the public records policy for the clerk's office is the same as it is for the prosecutor's office. The fee schedule will be the same for each individual departments. If that is the, if that is the decision that, that you want to make, that you want to adopt a fee schedule for collecting, collecting a fee for processing public records requests. It does seem like in the last couple of months, we have, and it's not any one individual department. It's just countywide, there has been more public records requests that, that I'm seeing coming our way than historically we've had in the past. And, and I don't necessarily think that is, is a result of any one thing. It's just citizens are exercising their right to know. And, and that is, that is part of transparent government is having a public records system in place that allows people to have access to those documents. There are, I think, I think kind of hand in hand with the public records policy is a records retention issue as well. So I think as we talk about public records, we'll also get questions about records retention. Primarily, how long should I be keeping these records? And when, when is it appropriate for me to be getting rid of them? And so I don't necessarily want to combine those two topics because I think those are, are deserving of an independent review. But I will, in the future, in the near future, probably put up a records retention training for, for discussion as well. Because I do think that if you don't, records retention is one of those things that it's easy to ignore. And, and when you do ignore it, then what happens is you, you start keeping stuff. I think for the most part, people's tendency is that they keep documents rather than, than process them. And, and you keep them way too long, then, then your storage, storage units fill up, your filing cabinets fill up. And, and that really does complicate public records as well.
And Brian, we do have a records retention policy, a lot of it's basic code.
I think we put that on the table. We just kind of have a brush up, a reminder, this is what the policy is. And, and make sure that you're implementing it and following it within your respective department. So, so everybody's handling documents the same way. But you, you'll, within those policies, there's always questions about what, what category, what classification does this document fit within the, the records retention policy? And that is something that I'm happy to help with. I think traditionally prosecutors, attorneys can, can help with giving advice on, on when to, when to retain documents. While we were on that topic, Jeremy had reached out and asked for some, some legal advice on our email retention and how that should fit within records retention. And so I am working on that and will work with Jeremy. But I think, I think that's a broader conversation for all the department heads and elected officials to, to weigh in on because they need to have, they need to have input on how email retention is affecting their day to day operations. I know within the prosecutor's office, we're going to have some very unique requirements, but I think Doug's office probably will too with elections and other things where, where emails need to be retained maybe longer than, than what the current email retention is. So aside from that, you know, lots of, lots of things going on in, in our office. We, our, our intern has completed his semester hours with us. It was really great to have him, gave me an opportunity to work a little bit with him and, and get an idea of what it would look like to have, have another attorney in our office. And so it was good for our office to have that. He was, he was a big help to us and wish him, wish him well. And, and his next big step is to take the bar. So he'll be focusing on that. And I think you all, you all had a chance to interact with him a little bit. So appreciate your hospitality on that. And it's, it was good to have a student with us that is interested in doing the kind of work that, that we do here every day.
So you looking at possibly coming back after his bar, or is he just moving on?
He, so he, his family lives here in Valley County and their plan is to stay here. And, and so I'm, we're hopeful that he will do that and be part of the legal community. And his wife's an accountant and works in, in McCall. And I think he still has a daughter at home that's in, in high school. So, so he will, yeah, will be here and be a part of our community.
Brian, I feel like it'd be appropriate for us up here to maybe sign a thank you card to Arnie and send it to him just in appreciation. Do that, so maybe somebody's got cards out of the red card.
See if we can't get something put together and put in front of you that you can.
We might want him to come back someday.
I think he would appreciate that very much, so. But anyway, thank you, thank you for the time you've given me so far this morning. I feel like again, I've taken more than my share, but if you do have questions, I'm happy to, happy to consider those.
Well, I'm looking forward to the public information request stuff because that's kind of why we went, you know, more technology, more of that stuff available on website is to reduce those, those issues. And I'm hoping that that's paying off.
Right. I, I'm looking at not this next Wednesday, but the following, I'll go back and look at the calendar and solidify. Not, not, not a good date.
Next Wednesday through Friday, I'm in Boise.
Maybe what I'll do then, I, so I want to pick it, I want to pick a good date and time because I, I expect that a lot of people are going to want to come to this discussion and training. So maybe I will propose several options and we'll, we'll take a poll and pick the best, the best date and time. But so look for that for me when I can get back to the office as well as a proposed, and I'll stamp it draft, a proposed draft, public records policy. And I'll send that to department heads, elected officials and, and this board so you can review it. And, and what I'm asking for, for those, everybody that's, that's going to come, what I'm asking for and will ask in the email is spend some time reviewing this draft policy and come with questions, concerns, or suggested changes. So we, so it's not my policy, it's the county's policy and everybody has got some buy in on it. So we will dedicate some time to review that, make sure that it's, it's a policy that reflects what you want it to, what you want it to be. And I think we need to have a robust discussion about a fee schedule. There are, yeah, well, we'll have, we'll save that discussion for the training. So, okay, any other questions? Thank you again.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Oki.
Um, there you go. Next one up is Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just down a little bit. Good news. Four of our vehicles were delivered this weekend.
Yay.
Ready, and down to the county yard. The driver of the car hauler had another one to take north and anticipate that he will pick up the wreck truck and take it back down and bring the other two remaining vehicles up by the end of the week.
Good news.
That's good news.
Yep. So then you guys are done in your department.
That will be.
Everything's been delivered.
Will be, yeah, hopefully by the end of the week, yes.
Two years later, three years later.
Eighteen months, but they're, they're here. So, um, just an update. So as I reported before, we have a detention officer at Academy being held at CWI. We have deputy that was hired a couple of weeks ago, started, another one will start next week. Another is discarding background, so those all be for the jail. And the three dispatchers, did they finish last week or they have one more week? Three dispatchers are finished their training.
Oh, that's good news.
At Ada County, they're going through their academy there. So, and then there shouldn't be any other of those. Post has been funded and they don't anticipate to have to go through this again and, and not have academies. So I have a patrol, well, one for patrol will be starting the academy post on May 1st, so.
And that takes, I'm sorry, three weeks, a month?
For, for patrol, it's almost 15 weeks.
Oh, my gosh.
Detention is nearly five, dispatch two.
So does that make you full?
No, no, because then, oh, we're going to be losing one in the jail. And then we did hire part-time security, former deputies come back to work part-time at the door.
How many positions do you still have?
It's been up and down.
Okay.
So, we need more in the jail.
Yeah, but there's one more that could be leaving us, so.
Yeah, so that, we get them and then.
We're never full, bottom line.
Exactly, but we have two, three in total because we have the two recreation vehicles and the one.
Yeah, so, yeah, we do have.
Well, I'm really excited about three in dispatch too, that's been a hard one.
Yeah, that's full.
Yeah.
That has been for a while, so we're happy with that.
Yep.
Pat will probably, will talk about this, the active shooter training went well. I was really proud of my staff that put that on. They're very passionate about that and I think that their instruction was really good. I'll meet tomorrow with Jeremy to finish up our budget. I've already met with the clerk, but we need to work out our technology needs and who's going to, what's going to be his budget and what's going to be my budget. So we'll be working on that tomorrow. We did receive the funds from the four corners fire last week. So for deputies and the temporary employees that we had, so that reimbursement came back.
Did you get all of it you asked for? The, all the sale regional and stuff?
It looks like it was down maybe just under $2,000 difference. So it was over $56,000 that was received. And then the FEMA money, I haven't heard back from them. They were supposed to ask for an extension so we could finish that up because we had different, there's just some other funds that we were playing for, so.
All right. You're just full of good news today, thank you. Good news, good news. All right, any questions for Sheriff? All right, thank you. Have a great day. Treasure.
He's getting better about that, you notice that?
Good morning.
Good morning. If I were bright colors, maybe you won't forget me.
I didn't forget.
Just a quick update from the treasurer's office this morning. We had four of our tax deed properties pay off, so we're down to 28 properties on that list. We will be sending out all of the certified mailings by Friday of this week. That process does incur a few dollars in fees per letter that's sent out. But otherwise, it's, it's a good way to get ahold of any individuals related to the property that might be interested in paying the taxes. Other than that, I, I did hear the discussion about the credit card process up at the transfer site. And I'm not familiar with the history of why that was implemented rather than using Access Idaho, which is our other credit card processing company that we use for all of the other credit card transactions here at the county. So I, I will need to do some research on why the, its MRF was used rather than Access Idaho.
So exercise additional fees?
There are fees, but they're charged directly to the individual who's using a credit card. And the county has only remitted the county portion. So if, if somebody comes in and pays $100 charge to the DMV, let's say, they are charged $103 and we receive $100. So our costs are covered 100% and the user is charged the fee. I do know with the credit card processing company they use at the transfer station that they provide all of the equipment necessary. And I'm not sure what the internet or cell service is like up at the transfer station. So that may have had some limitations on why that service was chosen.
I think that was in the beginning and then Jeremy fixed that with a, I don't know what it's called, not a hotspot, but I know we pay every month for that internet out there.
Okay.
But I think, you know, unless these guys just agree, we need to look at that access, yes, and then.
I don't know that there would be a difference on that because you still have to run a card one way or another. So, I mean, the internet shouldn't be the issue. It may have already been in place, you know.
Scott may know some more background.
I don't know why we did it that way.
Probably because I sold it to you guys and I was a good salesman. Maybe.
I don't know, I don't remember.
I don't know, but at $26,000 a year, I think we need to do a second round of that and figure out.
We will be converting the transfer station to that new Tyler software when that process goes live. So that may be a good opportunity for us to transfer the credit card system as well during that time. So we, I will look into it.
And then while you're here, would you explain so everybody understands the 7,700 we paid in title fees is for the tax deed? And we get that back upon collection?
Say that again, so, oh, yes, okay. So in the claims today, there was a check to the First American Title. Those fees are passed on directly to the property owners. So each title search that we perform, it's called a litigation guarantee title search. It costs $220. So when we send out our letters at the beginning of the year, we make it very clear that if your taxes are not paid by February 14th, you are going to be incurred substantial fees on top of your property taxes. And the first of those fees is that title search. So the day that we send all of the, the list off to the title company, we add a $220 fee to each of those properties that they are now responsible for on top of their delinquent taxes.
The question I had is that it was made out to Flying Resort Ranches.
Oh, sorry, it's Flying S Title, which it used to be First American Title, but they changed names. So yes, it is Flying S Title and escrow.
But in our system, it showed Flying Resort Ranches. And I didn't know what Flying Resort Ranches was.
That must have been an error in the vendor, okay? We'll make sure that that's correct before the check is sent out, okay?
Can't think of anything else. Any more questions for the treasure?
Yep. Good.
Have a good week.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to department heads. First one up is Annette, good morning.
Morning. We're picking up, getting some phone calls and people started pouring and so it's typical spring. I do have this action item for an extension. If you guys got the paperwork?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
It's their second extension, you guys got to approve it. They did send in a letter from the engineer updating the codes because we're in different codes. They have had a couple inspections. They're working on their shear and their frame right now.
So it is in process now, so we shouldn't see another extension.
He said it should be done.
So now, when you're talking extensions, I get those all the time because the state only does me a one year permit. I've exceeded them like two or three times because these houses are taking three years to get done. Is the same process with UPO?
He's already got one extension, so.
It's because it takes so long to build a silly thing.
I think the prices and the contractors and.
How do you charge for an extension or not?
$50.
Okay. How do I get charged? But while on the subject, we do need a motion to approve that extension. I'll make a motion to approve the extension on BP number 19 dash 0254.
A second.
Move to second in our own favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries.
Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you. That's all I got.
How is Gordon doing?
He's doing good.
Setting in? Good.
Yep. Yeah, I'm sorry. I should mention that. He's picking it up and eager to eager to work. Good.
Good news.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I heard he's smarter than Cindy. That's all I heard. They went to school together, so.
Oh, did they really? I went to school with him too, but he was a little bit younger. Skip.
Good morning.
Morning. Few housekeeping. So I have an IAC meeting in Twin Falls on Wednesday, so I'll do a half day of off tomorrow. Because I gotta do dog and house settling stuff. And I'll be coming back on Thursday and working from home on Thursday. Then on Monday and Tuesday, I have a funeral to attend, so be gone, then I'll be in my office on Wednesday, Thursday.
Is this juvenile justice administrators over there? Is that what it is?
It's both. It's the IAC for juvenile justice and adult misdemeanor.
Okay.
Do both of them. Because a lot of us administrate both sides of that.
You said that was in Twin or Idaho Falls?
It's in Twin Falls.
Twin Falls. Thank you.
Yeah. As far as what's going on, I got, because of V Corp and my wife, I've been involved and updated on House Bill 350, which is Health and Welfare's budget, overall budget. But part of that is also on Narcan, Narcan. And in that bill, they changed it so first responders are in charge of all the money to purchase Narcan, which how we define first responders could be sheriffs, could be the hospital, could be EMTs, could be, you know, the Reserve Medical Corps. And so that needs to be worked out in each county. And I foresee that probably needing assistance of the commissioners. So before, you know, like the Narcan we got for the county, got hold of CDH and they sent it to us and it was that simple. But now they're going to be responsible for that 1.2 million dollars. And the governor sent a message, an email on that. And by reading it, and I'll pass it on to you, he wasn't very pleased with putting it in that kind of category since, especially since it's now over the counter through our country and and we're trying to make ease of that. And 92% of Narcan that was distributed wasn't first responders. It was people like us and people that work in recovery and, you know, they just don't have the capacity to be everywhere.
Are legislators at work? It would be hopeful if we were to find out how, what would be the easiest access points for those that are actually going to be distributing it. So that's that's what I would need to know to help make any kind of decisions.
Well, we're gonna, all that's gonna be up to the first responders. I mean, because it just says first responder, so.
But on the county level, we can determine who that first responder is.
I think, yeah, and that's why I'm saying between the first responders getting together and having that conversation so it can get worked out and not of a huge burden where, you know, the EMTs and Don, they're going to be getting phone calls four times a day and say, hey, can you order us Narcan and.
I've already kind of had that conversation, so to speak, and they already have it. All three EMTs already have it in supply at the stations and they hand it out when people ask.
Well, there's another 1.2 million dollars for ordering for the rest of the year.
And where where they talk, they they don't have to buy it. They just call and they send a bunch more, so.
That's that's exactly right. They just call their whatever portion Valley County or the state gets to. But then the other, they have to coordinate that with people at V Corp, providers, us that distribute it out on the on the street, the main people that need it.
I'm wondering, I mean, Juan is our emergency management, emergency manager.
Steve and Garrett, all of them have it in in the fire stations in the ambiances now.
It's just, it's making the avenue clear to the community, who do they call? What is the process? What kind of timeframes are they looking at so they know orders, size, just the details.
I guess my only thought, because it keeps you awake at night, is I'm wondering if we should be doing something like schools. High school especially.
Well, the schools are their own district and, you know, I I would encourage this body to reach out and consider that. I know McCall PD has been working with the middle school and getting an MOA set up for some sort of relationship with them, McCall. You know, for active shooter stuff, making it more secure, having a relationship, having people in there. Maybe some sort of SRO hybrid. But I don't know about the high school, so.
We need to get to high school online with that.
What's that?
Need to get high school online with that too.
Yeah. Kevin, would you know, does like the high schools already have this stuff in their hands? I don't know. I'm gonna run that one down.
School nurses probably have it, stuff like that. Yeah, I know McCall High School is hard to break into. We have a daily presence at this school and Donley Elementary, as far as the sheriff's office. As far as just need it day to day to them, I don't know what kind of supply the school has.
Well, I'll run that one down for Cascade. If somebody could do it for Donley and McCall, just see if there's, hey, you can get it at the fire station. They got it available right now.
I can.
What I'm hearing is two different things and I want to clarify with Skip. So we know that all the first responders have it, but who doesn't have it is the ones that actually are normally giving it out, which is V Corp, our medical community. So they need to know how to get it.
Correct.
And so what what we need is someone to manage that in the county. Whether that be the sheriff's office, whether that be our first, whether it be our emergency manager or how, because.
EMS could EMS could do it.
I agree, but ownership with somebody instead of going through several, you know, like an avenue, a direct avenue that all the people in the community know, hey, this is where I need to email, call or whatever to make my request. And that is where we're at right now, as far as we don't know.
I I just feel like, I mean, we have an emergency manager for a reason, you know? Maybe Juan, we need to have that conversation or whether the sheriff would want to do it or how do you want us to handle it moving forward, Skip?
I mean. So we have some right now. It's just, I'm sorry, I'm reading, Monica's watching this because she's involved and she just texted me. Current providing sources. So it's it's finding out current provider sources, apparently. It's organizing that. And I I think what would be best is first to figure out who in our community wants to take on this responsibility, whether it's the Donley Fire Department or whoever, figure out who's going to do that and then set up meetings so we can or organize, they can organize the revenue way of the way of getting it. How do you order? How does it get distributed to that to go pick it up, that kind of thing?
Because right now you guys just call CDH and you get it.
Correct.
So you just need someone to be able to call to get it throughout the county.
Be able to order and be able to pick it up. Yeah.
And I think that's already been done through the fire stations and the EMS, but maybe we need to reconfirm with Juan, make sure that's how that's set up. But what I understood it, it's readily available at all the fire stations right now.
Okay. Just follow up with that and sure.
I'll send one, text, see what he says.
Getting more from her, see if I missed anything. EMS can distribute to the Rockin Hospital. This is brand new funding mechanism. Yeah, so so there's that to make sure that we have that worked out. Then just an update on the jail program for treatment. So they're currently between Sergeant La Croix and Rock. They're working with the provider that does the tablet stuff in there and it's it's challenging. It's trying to get that figured out. So they're still working on that. Because of capacity and safety concerns, they're still not able to do groups in the jail, but they're able to meet with clients one-on-one and attorney visiting. I'm also hoping that some sort of phone process is going to be worked in place here pretty soon, especially for new clients that just got put in custody because of drugs or alcohol. And they have somebody they can call and get set up and have a conversation and start working on what they need to work on so they can maybe be released earlier with proper safety protocols in place and help. So it's it's ongoing. I foresee that working out, but part of it's staffing too in the jail. And that just is what it is. So they're working on that. I don't think there's anything else really major going on with our office. I am interested in the retention protocols. I remember when that resolution came out and it seemed fairly generic. And then with some of our adult stuff, we may have cause to keep it longer because sometimes we see the same person in 10 years and that information can be helpful for us. So I'm looking forward to making a plan with that.
Skip, we we did pay for some juvenile costs today. Is that youth still in and how much longer do you think it'd be in?
No, it's not, the youth is still not in there. That was, the last one was an auto detain. So he was pending a charge and there were certain things that if he did auto detainment. And he was going through until next court hearing date, which happened last Wednesday.
So then once he goes to court, then the state pays it?
Okay, so we're talking about.
This was detention cost.
Yeah, so that's when we house a juvenile and juvenile detention. So he was in there on an auto detain until his court hearing, which was last Wednesday.
Oh, he's he's either out or he's moved on in.
He's he's out now. So it was just, it was an issue of violence, a history of violence. And it is, the judge just decided until he had a hearing and made sure safety plans were in place. Because they'd used, he's a dual county kid, so Boise County and us, living in Boise County. But they don't have, they didn't have an auto detain and we did between the two judgments. And so we used ours to house him until the court could see him and get some more plans in place for.
So the auto detain is just a protocol to be able to.
So it's the judge, so when there's a juvenile that's taken into custody, that's arrested, okay? They do a juvenile detention hearing. If they're in custody, they have to do it within 24 hours. If they're, let's say, second released, it's just during the arraignment. And the judge at that time does an order, let's think about like a condition of bond for kids. Basically the same thing. And on that, depending on the case, he can determine if he wants to do an auto detain or not. And then he can put a list on their common or acts of violence. Depending on the case, use of drugs or alcohol, whereabouts unknown, like running away. And if juvenile does that during their in their time, then an auto detain is we don't go to the court. We send the information to dispatch, law enforcement, the jail, and we just go get them and they go to detention. Then within 24 hours of that time, they're taken in, unless it's a weekend or holiday, then there's another detention hearing. And the judge determines if he or she will stay in there or be released.
Okay.
Oh, one final thing. We did have our final meeting with Sheriff's Department of Probation. Brian, our PA, Mr. Nogal was there and informed me that there's been a new Supreme Court ruling on fourth amendments, which I wasn't aware of. And that kind of changes what we can and cannot do with search and seizure compared to our legal advice in years past. A discretionary time got brought up and a few other things that I've sent the court. Job and email, list that we need to discuss and get direction from him. And I'm sure we'll get to that next week when he's back from his conference.
Kate, any more questions for Skip?
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Skip.
Melissa texted in. She's unavailable this week, so we'll go to Pat.
You better say good job, Monica.
Good job, Monica.
Good morning.
Morning.
Gosh, I have quite the list here. We were, you were talking about the the contracts and leases earlier. So the way it works with the employees is that the prosecuting, well, Brian came up with our lease. And so it's the same. So if we have for every new employee or employee that needs housing, they sign that lease, but it doesn't go to Brian every time. Then the facilities department then make sure if there's a problem with the house, then the employee reaches out to facilities if it's a facility issue. The money goes straight to the clerk, so I I don't have any indication as to whether somebody's late or anything. The clerk's office takes care of that. So it's for us, for this particular program, it is a three-pronged avenue that we go through. I have had instances where employees have come to me because they've been frustrated with facilities or whatever, and we've had conversations. And so if the employee is feeling like they're not communicating well with facilities or vice versa, then I'll just have them come directly to me and then we'll get a result that way. So just to kind of give you an overview of how that's working. And I mean myself a note, I don't think I have a procedure on that one. So I'll make make sure that we have a a good procedure for the next HR person, so they understand how that's going.
And the over, and in my opinion, I think we need to schedule something to discuss that because if we end up having more housing units available, it probably should be done by a property management company to really take us out of it totally. So if there is an enforcement mechanism, the county's not talking to another department within the county. I don't know what they would charge to do that, probably 10 or 15% of the monthly rent. But that way we're totally out of it and that might be something to discuss or.
I think maybe down the road, if we got like 15 or 20 of them, but we have what, two now or three?
Two, we're hoping for three.
Handle that now.
Yeah.
Till we get to that point where it's, and we're gonna know when it starts getting.
The, you know, if we were to have a property manager or somebody else doing it, it's still, there would be a certain amount of HR involvement just because they are an employee. So we'd have to, that process would have to be worked out. Oh, just something to think of. And speaking of procedures, I am finding that a couple of them I have not done, so that's one of the things I'm working on. I just want to make sure that it's easy for somebody to come in and be able to figure out what needs to be done, even though I'll be training them, like there's things I won't get them trained on because they happen so very rarely. So that's one of the things I'm working on. We had 17 total applicants for the HR position and we did pre-screening interviews last week. Or six of them were down to three. So we have three in-person interviews on the 19th.
And amazing candidates.
Amazing candidates. One of the things that you, the board had asked of me is to allow for two months worth of training. Based on the caliber of the people that we have and the fact that we're not going to be able to do in-person interviews until the 19th of April, I'm thinking if they don't start until the middle of of May, it'll still be enough. We'll be fine. So.
Well, we can still retain you longer if we need to.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I did learn that with Percy because I'm a full retirement age. When I retire from Percy, I can come back and help when when needed. It's just that I can't, I can't leave and then have you do like an offer letter that says we're going to guarantee 19 hours a week or whatever it's going to be. I can't do that part, but just to come back and help, it's not a problem.
And you have to be out for 30 days, correct?
No, that's only if they're not retirement age and you have to be out three months. So.
That's good news. So you're you're kind of thinking this person is going to come on board, what, around the first of May, middle of May?
Middle of May, probably more realistically. Yeah.
And all of the thing that really surprised me is all the applicants that were quality applicants are building a home in Valley County currently. It's going to be interesting to see how many people we get up here because everybody's already looking for, yeah.
Yeah, they have property and want to build on it, but that's scary too, because that takes forever. So anyway, yeah, we have some good applicants. I have also for that particular person coming in, I've worked on a a training calendar. So, you know, it's more of a guideline, but the first week we'll do this, second week we'll do this, third week, this week. So this is what we'll do and then it goes into miscellaneous because I couldn't figure it out beyond that. Handbook has been reviewed by, the handbook and ancillary policies have been reviewed by the PA's office and the elected officials and directors. And so we're doing a workshop next week. I did, I know you guys get a lot of emails and I apologize, but I wanted you to have the handbook and plenty of time to be able to look at it if you, you know, prior to our meeting. So I sent that out this morning. You should have it by then to look at when you're ready. Oh, brother. I, this is way a little bit in the future, but I want you to be aware. Last year I had signed up to do a conference for the local chapter of. Last year I had signed up to do a conference for the local chapter of um, human resources down in Boise. And was unable to go because that was right in the middle of my back issue. And so they uh, just deferred that cost to this year. So on May 2nd, I'm going to be going to a conference. And normally I wouldn't go to a conference this close to retirement, but we've already paid for it, may as well take advantage of it, so.
Could we send somebody else in your place? I mean, could the new person maybe go or?
If, yeah, if we have them identified, I certainly can and I, I will look at that as well because that makes more sense to me. Um, let's see. Um, we will be, begin the evaluations for the directors with you all on May 1st. Um, the procedure's a little fuzzy with me as we had issues last year. I don't, we need to figure out what that procedure's going to be. So I'm not sure whether we need to do that in executive based on what happened last year because what happened last year was so confidential. Or if we need to put it on the agenda and talk about how we want to do that. So I need a little bit of guidance there.
I would assume it would be in an executive pack because we are discussing performance plans, all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
That's my feeling, I don't know how these guys feel.
You're discussing the process of how we're going to move forward.
Precisely, because we had such a blow up last year.
I don't know if that can be executive or not. I would talk to.
Yeah.
G's office and see, you know, how we can do that, the process itself, because you're not discussing.
I wouldn't want to do it in an open session, honestly, personally, but.
Well, how about if um, we just do it, you can, probably if we make a decision, it'll have to be when we come out of executive. But as part of my, um, as part of my coaching, which is next week, maybe we can touch on it. And then discuss the process in open when we're not talking about people. So we can kind of do a hybrid thing. So that might be the way to work. Does that work?
Yeah, let's do it then and try and figure it out.
Yeah, because I think we have to be careful because we don't want to abuse the executive session. But I'm also concerned if we start talking about certain employees that then, then we have a problem, so.
Well, if we're discussing anything individually, we obvi, we have to be an executive.
Precisely.
If we're not, if we're just discussing the process.
Precisely.
We should be out.
So maybe we discuss the individual employees and why we want to change it and then we talk about what we're going to change it for public. All right, okay. Well, maybe um, depending on what next week's agenda is, we can um, do the executive first and then come out and talk about the process. Would that work?
Yeah.
All right. Have to write myself a note or I'll forget by the time I get back to my desk.
Well, tonight and next week, we have meetings with the city, so we can probably go longer.
Well, that's right, tonight at 6:00 and gas skid and next week at 11:00.
Yes, because we're probably not going to go home between anyways.
So um, active shooter went really well. We have a few people that still need to take it, including Elton Neil. And so maybe uh, if, if we can find on the agenda when, um, it's a little lighter in the afternoon, we can just do a makeup. Um, if Brandon, if it works with Brandon and his team. So I'll work with Brandon on getting that done, um, so we can make sure everybody that is here can go.
And that would be awesome, just to meet with him, two or three of us.
Well, it's gonna be four or five.
There's just so much, now it's hard to keep up with all of it.
Yeah, but if we do it on Monday, I think that will help.
Okay.
We did come out of that um, session talking about buying specific safety kits for the courthouse.
Yes.
So I think we need to just make sure we get stuff into the budget, um, whether it's HR's budget or wherever that is.
It's traditionally out of facilities. So um, Brandon and I are going to meet and talk about that with what we need. We already have first aid kits, they just are not trauma kits. So there's, there's some things in there that could be used in trauma, but not quite, so.
Only need tourniquets and all that.
They are tourniquets in there, but they're pretty rudimentary, so they're not like what they have. So yes, that is something that, that Brandon and I are going to meet on and, and talk about, so, yeah.
Area to think of, there's another mass shooting this morning, so we have to prepare ourselves.
We have to prepare ourselves.
Whatever could happen in the future.
We do.
We could need to deputize commissioners.
I do not want that role.
I would not want that role either.
I pack all the time, so. Not in here.
One last item is that one of the people on my public and public employers, um, email list had asked about, you know, what are people doing for raises? And some people are kind of like we are, we're filling the waters, not sure yet. Some of them have already decided. So based on that research, so far it's an average of 5%. I'll keep you posted, um, that's public. The um, but even not public, what I'm finding as far as private employers, it's looking at about an average of 4.5% is what they're looking for, so just a one.
Normally the way that works, Pat, is we do five or four or three and then we see what the budget will.
Yep.
Budget will do and do the best we can.
That's all we can do. So I um, I haven't, I've done a little bit of reviewing, but salary surveys don't really come out until the end of April or 1st of May, which makes it hard when we're budgeting. Um, but I am trying to stay on the pulse of surveys just to see what's, I mean of salaries, just to see what's going. And so I did do some preliminary last week, um, to see where we are. We're not horribly far off, but we still, you know, we're going to have to do something.
Has anybody heard what medical insurance is going to do this year?
No, I have reached out. So with Gabby reaching out to AAA or triple IA um, on their insurance and that starting next week. At the same time, I did reach out to Tim Marks with um, yeah, with the GEM plan. We, I misquoted when I said that we would get our reserves back. We will not, we will lose all of our reserves in GEM plan if we go outside of them. So what I asked him to do is come up with some options. So if we can have, you know, if they can look at what we can have. And maybe we do something where, you know, the, the county pays for a base plan of whatever it might be. And then uh, the employees can buy up. Um, one of the things that Craig's employer just did was go with a, a true flexible benefit plan. Where they give um, the employees so much money, so many flexible benefit dollars. And so in his case, like he went with a middle tiered plan and he had money left over that he could put into a medical reimbursement account.
Like a health savings account?
There is a health savings account option, which is different than a medical reimbursement.
You know, and that can, can the county pay or put that money in that account for that employee or does that have to come from the employee?
The county can. So the way a true flexible benefit plan works is that you have flex dollars. And you determine, the county determines what those are going to look like. And then the employee chooses, I want this health plan, this health plan, this health plan. One of the choices you can make is an HSA, it has to be high deductible. They've, they've tweaked them a little bit federally with the Affordable Care Act. Um, so I'm not as versed on them as I used to be. But as long as it qualifies, then you can do a federal H, H, HSA, Health Savings Account. Where the county says this much we're going to give, the health insurance is this much. And then there's money left over that can go into the health savings account to help pay for medical bills for that plan. The one that my husband chose is not an HSA, so we can't put it in the HSA bucket. But we can put it in a medical reimbursement bucket, which we already have at the county. So all kinds of options that we can do. I'm anxious to see what um, what Tim's team is going to come back with. So as we move forward, whether it be triple IA or GEM plan, one thing to think about is we'll lose the reserves at GEM plan.
How much are the reserves, do you know off the top of your head?
Oh man, it's uh.
Millions, probably.
Well then, that why are we even having the other people come? I mean, because this is new information, we shouldn't waste their time, we should not waste the employees' time. If we're going to lose millions, there's no way we can change our healthcare.
It's not going to be millions, but I think it's.
It's a lot.
And I'm, I'm, I know this isn't correct, but I think it's around $270,000.
That might have been the original, right?
That we first started with.
Yeah.
But what I like, the idea about this is this kind of makes GEM plan get up and let's get some options out here. Hold them accountable a little bit. You know, let's, let's, give us some more options of plans that we could pick.
We could have asked for that at any time. We just haven't. We've kind of gone on with our little routine and it's, it's primarily been because of the reserves. And if we mess with the current plan, when then we use a, lose that grandfather.
We lose the grandfather and that's a huge.
It is huge because then the plan design gets all messed up because we have to follow the Affordable Care Act requirements. Whereas if we stay grandfather, we don't. However, having said that, the current plan is becoming prohibitively expensive. So we do, we should look at something. And so that's what Tim and I had that conversation and we'll see what they come back with. He said that he would reach out to the actuary, actuary and have them come up and with some plans, so.
And I think once we get there, Pat, we need to put a workshop on that's going to, you know, give us a longer period of time to discuss this. Because this is a big deal for the county, big deal for the employees. And we don't want to just brush over this and we're just out of time to discuss that.
Yeah, we can't get, and there's a certain amount of education that goes into.
I'd like some legalities on, you know, if somebody chooses not to do a plan and they have a higher salary increase. You know, what are the legalities of that? So that's why a workshop, it would be good to just have a full conversation on our payroll system.
It just messes with the health insurance plan, it's not, nothing necessarily legal, people do it, but it does cause some challenges. So we can talk about that later, yeah.
Okay, any more questions for Pat? Sounds like you're on top of everything, so that's awesome.
Well, it sounds like I opened a can of worms, but aside from that.
It's a little can. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Jeremy.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, I don't have much, I was gone most of last week, so we're just.
Hopefully you were doing something fun.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty fun. I don't like the drive down to Winnemucco, but I had fun while I was down there, I just hate that drive.
It's a long drive.
There's nothing through Oregon at all out there.
Winnemucco, wow. Lose money down there.
What's that?
You can lose money in Winnemucco.
Yeah, you can do that too.
Jeremy, we paid for the MTDs today for the deputies, are those online yet or those installed, working and up or the?
No, we, so we're waiting for the docking stations, we got half of them.
Okay.
And we're also waiting for the new vehicles. Um, they're going to be like five weeks out, but I guess now they're coming pretty quick. So I got an email from Captain Stanbaugh on Friday. Um, and, and we've already started working on the, the basic configurations. We have a couple ready to go for the, for the two new vehicles. So we'll, we'll do our best to get them out there as those new trucks come in.
And then my other question is, where are we on the new servers? They've been ordered? Are they, you were going to update some of the servers, I think, a month or two ago? Thought that was in your budget.
That uh, security appliance was. If that's what you're talking about.
Maybe that's what I'm talking about.
And you talked about, you've talked about server updates too.
I'm finalizing some of the configuration on that. And we, we do have some, and maybe, I don't know what you're talking about. We do have some uh, new stuff that um, we're looking at putting like the McCall annex for an offsite or a geographically separated backup server and stuff like that, and that's still in the works.
So we've talked about onsite servers versus the cloud.
Yeah, I've looked at some cloud stuff, I, I haven't started moving that direction fully yet.
Kind of like the offsite behind the firewall in case we ever need to get to it, to get our information back. There's certainly a lot more of that stuff going on now in the world, it's evening Christmas.
I know.
Everybody's getting hacked. Okay, any more questions for Jeremy? All right, easy peasy.
Yep, thank you.
All right, Cinda.
I should have asked.
Good morning.
Good morning. So first thing is the action item on the bitten faxing conclusions. Confirm approval of those.
I would move that we approve. The faxing conclusions for, then I'm trying to look for a code number or.
It was the appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission decision.
Is there a number on it at all that you need on there?
There's no number.
Okay, then I would just move to approve the, the uh, bitten fax and conclusions on the appeal.
Doug Second?
Yep.
Doug Second, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, you print them out?
I, I did. Doug, do you have a copy already?
Yeah, if you can bring them up, that'd be great, thanks.
We got your highlighted versions and I couldn't actually track, or I couldn't turn off tracking changes. So we got all your track changes copied this time. So I just. You would have sent it to him.
You went to the state, right?
Yes, please.
Just couldn't turn it off, so it looks like we got a clean copy, but.
Hey.
So last week, um, participated in the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District meeting. And they were um, wanting to invite the Valley County engineer up so that the engineer can tell them what they do. Um, I don't know that I have the money in my budget to pay for that.
Do we know how much that would be, Cinda?
I, I mean, two hours up, two hours here, two hours back.
Six hours, what is it, 100 bucks an hour now?
Probably $130 an hour. So you're probably looking at 1,000 bucks with mileage. Um, so I don't know, I think that we should just, I recommend that if they want the engineer to come up, they can just go ahead and pay that fee because we do contract with them for services to the county, not services to the Valley Soil and Water Conservation District.
That's my thinking, send, send them a letter that if they do want to meet with our engineer, it's going, they're going to have to cover that cost. And then they can make those arrangements between them and.
So why would they, I'm a little confused. Why would they, why would they care about what our engineer does? He does a lot of things, but.
Well, there were some questions about, you know, does he do stormwater? What does this look like? I mean, what do we get at the end? Because they never really see that until after the final plat, so just before the final plat, but.
And there, maybe there could be.
The, the letter that the engineer had given us. Uh, but I think it was Leonard wanted to know what standards they're reviewing to. Um, because some of our applications might come in in a two-year or a 25-year or a 100-year. And so they want to get down into the, the technical portions and storm event sizes.
And I think it's only fair if they're requesting the information, they pay for it.
That's what I feel too.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, they'll be here at 2:15 today, so I don't know if you want to have a conversation with them.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's talk about it then.
And I guess what, what we ask from them are like BMPs.
Recommended BMPs.
And what other things do we ask them to comment on that would, you know, that they would need to learn from the engineer, I guess? I mean, that's, and, and they may wind up here and end up talking to him for six hours and we end up paying for that. I mean, that's totally outside of our control if they want to get that in depth.
Put ourselves in that position.
No, and I, I'm just thinking, maybe they just do a letter, you know, a request. We need to know what, how you engineer BMPs or whatever it is. How, how do they interface with us?
And the letter that Cinda typed up for them that shows everything that Parametric did really, I thought a phenomenal job explaining everything they come out with, but. We've got some board members that they want to get in the weeds with these guys. That's fine, but if you guys are going to have to pay the bill.
Agreed.
It's over and above.
Yep, Parametrics put that letter together and I did pay for that.
And I'll, when they come in today, you'll be here of course probably, I'll notify them that if they want that information, they'll have to hire Parametrics to do it.
And tonight we are meeting with the City of Cascade, City Council on the impact area discussion. Um, I scripted in my mind that I would probably introduce that and say how this conversation started. Um, and then introduce the recommendation from the Valley County Planning and zoning commission. And then it would be a discussion with you and the council.
You know, are we early on the agenda or?
You are after their department heads.
So it's going to be later than 6:00.
It looks like it, unless you contact the mayor and ask if you can go first.
Their agenda's been posted, I wonder.
Yeah, I don't think they want to change that.
Great.
It'll be a long night.
Okay, yes, I'll see you there. That's, I mean, we're busy, I mean, you know, we're busy, we have big agendas, we have multiple meetings and if you want to know the details, let me know.
Where are we meeting? Is it at?
City Hall.
City Hall.
Okay, all right, we'll see you tonight if not sooner.
City Hall.
You're on the right side.
Right next to the bank, just south of the bank.
Yeah, just right next to it.
Oh.
Used to be the old post office, no?
Yeah, I remember. Never been there yet.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Mr. Laxson.
Morning. Everybody have a great, great weekend.
Thank you.
Don't see any sunburnt faces, so.
Hopefully you didn't.
I was sick all week, man.
You were sick all week?
Oh, I cooked inside a kitchen.
I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
But I cooked inside the kitchen.
I was gonna say, if somebody had a case of sunblock sitting up at some of the snowmobile parking lots, they could have made a fortune, I think.
Oh, man.
And it was, it was a great, Easter is a special time. Um, so Stevens and Associates, Associates is now H R A, Historical Research. And, uh, we are using them for the FAA road. They've done a little bit of research. But the big question is, using them in the future? But budget, how, how detailed do we want to use them on all of our, uh, potential RS two four seven seven projects? Because right now we don't really have a budget or anything for that.
No, but I think we put some in prosecutors, didn't we? No? Remember Doug?
We put ten grand.
So send all of the bills to Oki.
Nope, not for that. Potentially take it out of, I, I, I don't know if it would be out of the road department's budget for professional services, but I think that if this is something that is going to be continued to be researched, it should be budgeted for in the recreation department's budget.
Okay, so we gotta remember that, Larry, for your budget.
So.
I thought we put twenty thousand or ten thousand.
Why not the road department? Why is it recreation?
And that's what I was proposing, Commissioner Moppin.
The road department?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I misheard you. I thought you said recreation, so.
So for the rest of this year, how do you want me to handle that? Just, just give them to Jeff? How much money's left in their, uh, budget for that?
I think the commissioners need to really understand of what's taking place and what research is being conducted.
Right?
Well, and I understand we're gonna have to have that, we're gonna have to have that data from the history to prove these, and so we need this person, but I thought we put money for an attorney, David Claiborne or somebody in your budget and we put, maybe it was Rhodes, I don't know, I can't remember. But I think there was money somewhere that we put, I thought it was twenty thousand dollars for this function. But I do agree with Doug, it should be the road department. Um, I guess from here on, you'll just have to send us the invoices and we'll try and figure out someplace to bring it. Get it now.
Okay, okay.
Cherry's salary maybe.
Perfect.
Wow.
Happy to contribute.
Thanks.
I'd mentioned to you guys that last year we got a new snow, we got a new one this year, but the one last year, the, um, fan had, had fallen apart and so the hydraulics overheated pretty dramatically and, and we've gone through it and I finally, I got the point. I called IDPR and I called Petersons. Uh, Petersons can't even replace the fan. There is not only none in the United States, but there isn't any available anywhere. So they have to refit the whole system to, to make it work. I just told them, we're gonna, we're gonna put the cat away. We're not gonna do spring maintenance on it. We're gonna mark everything, bag everything. And, uh, it's, uh, as far as we're concerned, it belongs to IDPR. And they agree. They're gonna try to force Petersons to come up and retrofit it. So that's kind of where we are in that.
That's the new one?
It was just a year old. Yeah. Yeah. And we're getting another new one next year, which, uh, you know, I told Petersons I'm a little concerned about. Do we need to go back to prenoth, you know?
I mean, stay with what works. I mean.
Yeah, well, that's the issue though. We're not sure what really works anymore. Everybody's struggling getting parts and pieces. It's not just, uh, it's not just piston bully, but it's, it's everybody. That this one is a pretty bad deal. I don't think the retrofit will be that complicated. It's just that when you get into the electrical on those things, remember everything's twenty-four volt? That's where it becomes a problem.
I've, uh, I've had the same issue with Skidser.
Oh, yeah.
Went down New Hall and they says, your old Skidser, we'd love to be able to sell all these forever. These new ones with all the electronics, we have more trouble.
Yeah.
Than anything. So that's what we're running into, same thing. That's awesome.
Yeah, well, we'll see. So that's where we are in that. And I scheduled next week for Brian Davis to come back and talk to you guys about GNA. I had a lot of conversations with him about it. And, uh, and Oki and I have been talking about it. And there's a lot of things that he did not explain. There's a lot more, a lot more funds involved for projects. Uh, when they talk about us hiring employee, there's actually funds to pay that employee. It's, it's not like it's just being, we're just being cut loose and told we gotta add more to our overhead. And, uh, so, but I, I, he's gonna come in and, uh, and talk to you guys about it. I think it's completely different than I thought it was, so.
I think that's great. And Gabby was asking if you needed that to be an action item. Did you?
And, and I, 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 I said, I think, I, I sent her an email back saying, I think we're a little preliminary. But yeah, let's put it on as an action item, just in case we get to a, a certain agreement.
Because that grant is due.
Yes.
So you're gonna have to have an action item to move forward with that grant if that's what we choose to do, right?
Yes. Yeah.
I'd make sure and clarify that on the agenda.
Yeah, it's kind of funny because I was in a conversation with one of the private, uh, logging firms because one of the issues is, is finding a forester. And there's a lot of foresters that work in the private sector that are aging out of that, that are looking for something a little different. Maybe we can kind of go down that road if we make that, if you guys make that decision. We're gonna be working all week, this week on CIP forums. Uh, our CIP forums for, uh, twenty-four are gonna be a little different because we're, we're gonna be doing a lot of by guessing, by golly on how much it costs for engineering and for parks and facilities. But we'll do the best we can and, and have it over to you. We want to finish them this week. I've also asked IT, I think I included you guys on the email, it's time for us to get a way for people to go online and, you know, with a QR code or whatever and purchase our part, our annual parking permit and our annual, um, rafting permits. So that's another wonderful project. Any questions?
Well, next year, like, you know, you guys are doing the snowmobile permits. Are you doing those?
We are not doing, uh, any of the IDPR stuff. Until, we will have that conversation when we get into the Lake Fork office so that we'll have a facility available to do that. I think it's a good idea, uh, just to have a, like a kiosk set up to where they can go onto an online system, not necessarily run through us, but have a place where they can go on and, and purchase them online. And we can help them. That's the biggest issue that IDP has, PR has had is, is the training session, how to do it. Once you've done it, why, once it's pretty easy. Of course, IDPR is now looking at the possibility of a new vendor, so.
Perfect, again.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Showed over here, uh, seventeen thousand was requested for, um, grooming up there at the.
Oh, for lot funds?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not for grooming, it's for, uh, snow removal, parking lot snow removal.
Oh, just cleaning the parking lots.
Yeah, and they gave us, if I remember correctly, fourteen thousand last year. All we did is put an increase on what the fuel and maintenance cost. And boy, I'll tell you what, we will break that seventeen thousand this year by far. We've spent a lot of money moving snow around. It's been a big year.
It's been a big year.
And, you know, I think the, you know, long term, I think is we're gonna really have to look at another front end loader for a couple of areas, so.
And you're putting in your budget, some grants.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Great.
All right, I want to apologize. I was sick all week. I was gonna be at all these rec meetings. I'm just now getting my voice back. So I missed all of them.
So the PFC meeting, um, I would appreciate it if you could make that one and then we could get together and talk about this one. Uh, I'm gonna be in Boise that day. I got tickets for David Jeremiah and I'm really excited about going to it.
Oh, cool.
I, and I have not missed a PFC meeting in ten years, so it's kind of a, yeah. I'll try to listen online as much as I can. But there's some questions I have on the Four Corners Fire and on the Railroad Saddle Project I'd like to share with you.
Okay.
I can't go for some reason. Sometimes we'll just reach out to somebody else if you can pop in or whatever.
Yeah, just. Awesome.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Larry.
Thanks, guys.
Hey, do you guys need a break?
Yep.
I'm gonna take a quick break. I couldn't wait, sorry.
Two minutes.
So, um, it's just, it's finding places to go and come up where, you know.
Mr. Chairman, we're off.
Hey, welcome back everybody, we're at our ten thirty buildings and grounds, go ahead Scott.
So, the, um, talking with Steve, uh, last Friday, uh, telling me what they did there was they had sucked the water out of the hole, heightened a van on a leak or something down there and stuff, and then he said that he had found some drawings or some documentation that, um, kind of showed the line, that there's some tees that were put in for possible future use for the county around the corner of Spring Street and Idaho up there in that vicinity. So, when conditions get conducive that they can dig without, and actually work in a hole, they want to, uh, expose those, see if that's a leak and repair it, and then, you know, the road and everything else is gonna have to be repaired at that point, but kind of where we're at right now, it's, you know, right, you can see it's running there.
Well, and if it is our stuff leaking, then it will certainly help pay to get it fixed, but I don't think that's gonna be the issue.
Yeah, I'd like to say I'm not quite sure, until we tie on them, well, those actually are, are, you know, our responsibility at that point, so.
Are we talking about what the cities do to fix that?
Okay. Mm-hmm, yeah, cause it's, um, soon as it warms up enough here, they don't need their geothermal anymore, they'll shut it off and the water will all go away. And every fall, when it gets cold enough, they need to run their geothermal again, it manifests itself, starts coming out of the ground here, and you can see when it snows, that whole section in front of the, you know, sees stays melted off, cause it's leaking and warming the ground there.
Well, yeah, I put my hand down in there the other day, if I see it bubbling up, it's like.
Yeah, well, you can have it, it can be below zero out there, and it's, it doesn't freeze, and steam comes off of it, so it's, it's not potable water or anything, it's, it's, you know, it's got the heat from the geothermal in it, so.
The, have you contacted the school about what they're willing to do, or is this just strictly city?
We've kind of gone around, we talked to them before, last couple years, superintendent before this, and alls I've gotten is they deny it's their geothermal doing it, but it's, it's obvious, it is. We gotta find the leak, and we all gotta go together and work on it, but we gotta get something done, cause it's destroying the road and.
Yeah.
City's gonna take the lead on it and then work the school on it.
I could see the city fixing it, and then they would have to charge school district for repairing their line.
Yeah. And stuff, and then, you know, the road's gonna have to be repaired, and I'd say it's starting to, you know, compromise things like we're, if it undercuts our conduits, it holds the nine one one, you know, wires and stuff over there, and they sag or crack or, and this corner of the building has a history of water issue and sagging, so, uh, we don't need any more water in the ground over there, out here. Kind of where we're at with that, um, other than that, we're just, uh, with spring cutting, you know, the snow's gone, start working on, you know, clean up around here, um, we do have some, um, uh, HVAC projects, we're gonna need to get done here, spring approaches, uh, we need to get AC into the U of I building for them over there. So I'd like to replace that, uh, oil furnace with a gas one with, you know, with an air conditioning unit in it at that time. Um, we've also got to repair or replace furnace up at the annex, um, we lost the, the condenser and and compressor sit outside under a little hut, and we lost one that went to one of the units in there. And diagnosing the problem, if we do go back and we go in with a new one, we can't use the R twenty-two anymore, and the coil that's in the furnace can't accept the new retrofit, um, refrigerator. So that means we have to tear the whole furnace out to get the coil to take it out. So if we're gonna go to that extent of it, just, I'd like to replace the furnace while we got it out, just take it out, put the new coil in, new furnace, and, uh.
But is that electric furnace?
Yeah, they're, no, those are gas furnaces.
Those are both gas?
Yeah, yeah, and I'd like to switch this oil out to gas over here too, um, and stuff, so we have those, uh, kind of those projects, uh, coming here now that spring's starting to hopefully be here.
Scott, is that furnace old enough that it wouldn't be good to put down here? But if you're gonna take the old one out and you can get to the coil, that'd be appropriate to put it down here, or?
That's something I'd have to ask them, you know, and if it's the right size to do that building and stuff, yeah.
It's a good point though.
Yeah.
Hey, what else you got?
Um, bad little incident that the recycle center gentleman was leaving, and, uh, wind blew, gate closed and and it tore up the side of his truck, so we're dealing with that. Now, is it, he couldn't get him locked back because of all the ice and snow around him, uh, something we're gonna have to look at next year. Possibly getting him a snow blower, whoever was operating that, so they can keep it clear behind the gates better, cause it's hard to get the equipment back there to get the snow out, but just a coincidence, he was going out in the northeast gate, wind caught it and brought it around and did pretty good damage to the side of his truck.
And this was one of our residents, or this was the guy working there?
Oh, resident. Well, I already met with him, took pictures of it, and we're, um, what his agent suggested is, is he just pays, he'd have to go and get it fixed, and then if I crimp settles, then we reimburse him, or if I crimp says no, then reimburse him out solid waste.
Yep, either one, we have to do that.
Yep, so, and we had a kind of individual kind of confronted the girls up there over his ticket, um, and ended up, um, uh, they, they filed an incident report with me, we filed it with the sheriff's department, they, um, one of the deputies went up, talked to them, and contacted the individual and told him, you know, that if he continues this way, he will be banned from the, the site up there, so. Girls handled it good, as, I'm, I'm really happy with how the sheriff's department, uh, handled it for us and everything else, so. And that, um, next week, we should start on the hood, um, for the jails, um, updating the, um, updating the one in the jail, bringing that one up, uh, and the, uh, community center up to code and stuff. And then the gentleman from the baler, the company we're buying Westco is gonna be here, he wants to look at our, our, our building and existing. Unfortunately, next week, I won't be here for any of it, I'll be gone all next week, um, I have to go to the valley, uh, my brother and sister coming in from out of state, and we're gonna clean out and prepare my parents' place for, for sale and stuff, so, um, but.
Fun. Sounds like a great vacation, Scott.
I lose sleep over this every night, just.
So Scott, are you gonna sound like Mitch or somebody?
Yeah, I get, yeah, we get those guys set up with it, um, I am already talked to Brandon from Westco and gave you Mitch's contact information. And, uh, we'll get them all set up and laid out and stuff, uh, and that, and things, but, um, other than that, uh, we're, uh, worked with, um, Great West on, um, the, the financial plan, um, and, and forecasting expenses and stuff, and, um, also gonna look, I think, this next year, instead of going more towards a building for recycling, is gen, uh, something, uh, concentrating on the transfer site building. Um, the condition of it is so poorly, is poor, um, and look at possibly a baler and bill, or a building for the new baler and processing in two twenty, two thousand twenty-five budget year.
You know, in that contract with Lake Shore, aren't they responsible for the damage though, because I know we've made them fix stuff in the past that they've broken?
You know, I don't think there's anything in the contract that spells it out, I think they just, cause they felt responsible, um, they, they did and didn't, um, a lot of the damage, uh, that was done a year before last was when we had trash cleared out of the mound almost, cause they weren't getting hauled off, and, uh, they're, um, who was in charge went in there and pushed it up a loader and rammed stuff through the side of the building, and, uh, they did fix some of it, I end up having to replace a fan uh, in there, but, um, we really need to get the walls inside higher, the concrete walls, so trash doesn't end up, you know, between it and the building, um, Great West's recommendation is we replace all the metal on it and stuff, reskin it. We need to get the supports on the sides of the doors, um, replaced, cause, um, they're pretty badly damaged, and the only thing that would do that type of damage is the back end of one of those loaders with the big weight, is no one's gonna do that type of damage with the three quarter ton truck or anything else. And the floor really is one of the first things that we gotta address, it's, um, I was like, Eric found some asphalt that was dumped and brought it down, he's, Eric, you know, loads of trailers in there, um, and put it in there and packed it down, so he's kind of plugged the hole right now, but, um, that, that building is in the need of a lot of attention.
Is that the one, that's the baler, where are the balers sitting right now?
No, this is, I'm talking about the transfer building up at.
Oh, yeah, it's a mess.
Yep, it is, so, um, I think we're in direct, most of our funds from solid waste, um, now we have a new baler and we can continue on with that. We're gonna get the cover put up and, uh, direct more of the funds, um, towards that, that building and up there.
Well, and if you could get a chance, you still have that contract with Lake Shore?
Oh, yeah, I, I, I have a binder copy.
You have electronic format, in electronic format or is it paper?
Um, it doesn't take me long to scan it in, I can scan it.
Or maybe I could come over and do it for you or something, but I, I'm pretty sure we've had Lake Shore go in there and you guys gotta fix this, you broke it, you, you, you fix it.
Yeah. We've had to play, the floor is just, you know, a place that wore out from all the years of pushing stuff across it, and and they used to wash it down as a trench drain, it's kind of halfway pointing there, that's totally wore out, used to go out into a tank that, you know, honey dippers would come up and pump it out, it's no longer functional, um.
Do you have a full plan for renovation up there? And is that anything that is part of that Great Western plan?
With Great West with, um, what we'd like to do is just have a general contractor come in, put it out, you know, request for proposal, someone will come in and just do it all. And, uh, come in and do the floor, do the siding, replace the red iron, um.
We'd have to shut it down probably for a week or two to do that.
Well, that'll have to do one bay at a time, if we come up with a way to wall it off, cause I don't know if we can shut it off, shut it down for a week. I mean, where would Lake Shore take their, their route trucks?
Be a challenge.
Yep, that, that is, that's another part of it, it's a real challenge, cause that place is just, you see, see such heavy usage.
Yep, yep, it's too small for what we're doing with it.
That was my question, you know, as far as a, some type of a plan, so you know how to shut it down, or, you know, what, what are we gonna do to be able to do some of that work, so, cause it's gonna be a challenge up there.
Oh, I, I remember wiring it when they first built the site.
What's that?
I remember wiring that silly when we first built it.
Yeah, and we've gone through, this last year, we replaced all the lights in it with LEDs and replaced, um, all four exhaust fans up there, um, we purchased a cordless, uh, blower for Lake Shore to go up, cause they had their man lift there, their snorkel lift, and, uh, get, and blow those things out, cause they get so much dirt, it's in the windings, they overheat, and then they're, and they're expensive, the fans were expensive last year.
A lot of dust in there.
Would there be a way to? Well, I'm just thinking, at a place people could dump, you could have a big front in loader could fill up those semi-trailers while they're working in the building.
I'll tell you right now, those, their loaders they have there right now, can't reach over the top of those.
Can't reach over that, oh, that.
That was one of the things I discovered when I, when I was talking with, um, Amir about, um, grinder, and, you know, equipment we'd need, you know, like a track hoe and a loader, he says you have to have a big loader to reach over the sides of those to dump into.
Uh, good point, good point.
So that's why they use, you have it recessed, there's also scale down in there too, so, would really, Scott may claim that it's on his list and it belongs to the, to Lake Shore, but I'm not quite sure about that, but, um, on his inventory lists of Lake Shore's property is the, that scale, and it was designed so they would not have to keep pull out and weigh, go back in, take some off, put some on, but it was never maintained, I guess it's not big enough, but it would alleviate a lot of traffic of them getting involved out there, if they could load their trucks right there, know they're done and take them away.
Well, and it's only, I think it's single axle scale, so they have to weigh, weigh each axle, and then if they're light in the front or the back, then they back up and push some more in it and then weigh it again, but, uh, when I looked at it, it could be rebuilt, I mean, it's not that bad a shape, that scale.
Yeah. And some, cause they kind of even do it on our scale up there, I think they, they weigh them twice, um, things.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot of work to do up there, I mean, we need a game plan for the next five years.
Yeah.
If they're up there, they've got the concrete trucks up there, do we need to pour a couple more pads up there for future expansion? I mean, how do we do it cost-effectively?
Yeah.
And make something work.
I'm afraid what we're looking at is a whole nother facility to the east and a new building with new floors in it, and then we can take down the old one and redo that one as well, but cause they can only push one truck at a time, and you guys need to be able to do two or three trucks at a time, we have four bays or five bays so that people can get through there faster.
Yeah.
It's just not big enough for what we're asking of it.
Well, it, it's, it is right now, cause you go up there and there's nothing in it, um, it's a real, it's, again, it's a real seasonal up there, the summer it gets hammered, and then we get to fall and winter, and it's, it, it, you know, slows down, um, I think I need to talk to Travis more, he, cause he talked about putting a third bay, but he kind of feels that if they maintain personnel and equipment there, that it's still adequate for what we're doing.
Well, it's an interesting process to go up there and watch how they do all that.
Yep, and also, it's the, the traffic pattern up there is really, and we really can't alter it unless we kind of tear down the building at the end down there where their, where their brake room and, and stuff is, cause the traffic pattern just doesn't work up there, and there's no really room to do anything.
The only room is really back towards the east, I think.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I think we need to have that conversation, again, you know, you need a five-year game plan and.
Well, Great West was supposed to kind of help us with some of that.
Yeah, you know, they, and then what they presented, um, we have to go back and look at their, you know, um, proposal and stuff.
Okay, what else you got, Scott, we gotta move on.
No, I think that's about it for right now.
Good, well, nothing frozen broke so far, so you got through it.
No, we got through it.
We do need feedback from you, so we need somebody to, to, um, I think you ran here for a portion of it, but Oki's talking about leases and contracts and that type of thing, we need to make sure that you have enough individuals in your department to take over anything as far as lease enforcement or, you know, contract renewals or we need to look within the county and figure out which division is the best one to do this.
Yeah. So, and we do, and I didn't know we have one with, with Clay Peak, cause until Doug sent me, we have a renewal with them, I guess, coming up. Um, it ran for three years and is up this year.
And we used to have one for Mountain Home as well. I don't know if that, you know, we haven't been going to Mountain Home for years and years, but that was always plan B and C for me, was that viable?
Well, and we need to.
That's coming up for a renewal, so.
You know, you're, you're overseeing the lease with, uh, fairgrounds and, you know, I mean, how do you, how do you envision that, that's a greater conversation, not for today, but how do you envision being able to do this type of work moving forward, or is that within your division, or should it be somewhere else?
That's, that kind of, the Fairwood County come up with the capital improvement committee, they need to sit down and figure out what they want to do down there, come up with a priority, and then bring it to me so I can put, you know, CIP request in for them. But I'm not gonna go figure it out for them, they've got to do their part, get a plan, get a direction, what they would like done first, and get that to me, and I'd be more than glad to, you know, get CIP put in, and we can get moving on, but, um, we got enough to do without time to, to do the, what needs to be done down there too.
Well, and it's a tough deal, cause everybody has a different idea.
Yeah.
So that's good, put it in their bailiwick and they can figure it out.
Yeah. Yeah, that's about all I got right now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, before we move on to road and bridge, Kenzie, Kenzie, did you want, need, or do you want to come up and give us an update or anything?
She's on agenda at eleven thirty, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you're on?
Yeah.
Oh, that's for the grant though, okay, we'll, we'll wait till then.
Okay.
Jeff, you're up.
We need a break, do we?
No, we took a break, we're good.
We're all broke, we're all broke. You don't go, you don't get on Facebook, do you?
I look on there, but I, I, I don't comment, and it's very good thing I don't.
One of my men called this morning, he says, "Do you see what people are saying on Facebook about the potholes?"
I, I, I see it.
Every year.
I see it.
We should offer to go buy them trees.
Plant shrubs in them.
Herb settings in.
So you have some action items, you wanna do that first?
Yep, let's do the bids first.
Okay, bring them on up.
We have one bidding company on all this, it ought to be pretty easy.
Same companies last year?
Yep.
So our next gen item is an action item, this is paving bids for Ashton, Clear Creek, Loomis, Meadows, uh, West Fore, East Roseberry, and Profile Creek Bridge, right?
Oh, Profile Creek Bridge, we did not get any bids on that.
So you're gonna do that one later?
Yeah, so these, these papers are coordinated with the bid, we didn't put them in the packet.
So this is the acceptance letter?
And they're, they're per bid, and so the papers they're with is with that, if you get them mixed up, that's your, your fault.
Oh, thanks a lot, man, appreciate that.
Do we need motion for that right now?
No.
We gotta open them first.
Oh, okay.
They're in the budget.
And they're all glued and taped and. Okay, so these are the paving bids for, so we better start a list, this is Clear Creek. Total bid for mobilization, asphalt paving, three inch mat, twenty-four feet wide, and to pulverize the old asphalt. The total bid for, I don't know how long this is, how long the road is, Jeff?
That was not very long.
Oh, it's about thirteen hundred.
Yeah, it's basically from the highway to the first ninety.
Okay, so this bid came in at a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Hundred seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-five. One, one, seven, six, eight, five.
Mr. Chairman, what road is that for?
This is for Clear Creek.
So Jeff, the requirements on this met everything that you put out on RP, the three inch thickness. Do we need to do, last time when we started doing this, we had some core drilling done to make sure that these roads are willing to, are able to accept. So none of these are gonna require that core drilling. And it does meet all of your specifications that you put out.
Okay, and this is from um, Valley Paving and Asphalt. And we don't have any other bids for that, correct?
Correct.
So I gotta print some of these off and sign one for each bid?
Nope, each, each one of those papers goes with the bid you just opened.
Okay, the next one is East Roseberry Road Paving Project. Oh, I see what you did.
Do you wanna do these separately or together?
Uh, it's. Until I see, until we come up with the total price, that's gonna tell us if we can do all of them or if I gotta take one off or. Keep it in my budget amount.
Okay, for East Roseberry Bridge Mobilization, three inch mat, twenty-four feet wide, pulverize the old asphalt. The total bid is eighty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents.
And I'm sorry, which bridge?
This is East Roseberry Road.
East Roseberry.
Yes, so this is the section from the highway to just past the elementary school.
Okay.
We, we did a skim patch on it a couple of years ago to hold it together. And that is, we got a hundred thousand dollar grant from LTAC to do this.
Okay.
So that'll, that LTAC money will cover this one.
You're not gonna go all the way to farm to market? You're just gonna stop right past the?
Just, we're gonna stop there. Cause I, I've still got a lot of work to do. I got cobras to replace. I got a lot of stuff to do out far there.
Valley paving also.
And that's Valley Paving, yes. Okay, the next road is West Four Lane Paving Project. I wish I had a length on this. This, they don't have the length.
Should be a length on there. It'd be uh, like thirty-eight hundred feet.
It gives me yards. Wanna come look? I'm just not seeing it.
That's East Roseberry one?
West Four Lane.
West Four.
West Four is three thousand nine hundred feet long. Send your invitation.
Three thousand nine hundred feet.
Three thousand nine hundred, yes. By twenty-two. So it's uh.
Okay, what was um, uh, East Roseberry?
Okay.
You find it?
Uh, East Roseberry, looks like it's uh, nine hundred and fifty feet long.
Nine hundred and fifty, and then what was Clear Creek?
These are all at twenty-two foot wide?
Twenty.
Um, they're twenty-twos.
Twenty-two foot wide, three inch deep.
Clear Creek is uh, thirteen hundred feet long.
Thank you. Okay, did I give you guys some numbers?
No.
For West Four is, the bid is two hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars. Two, five, five, seven, one, one.
Jeff, did you include anything on East Four on that?
Nope. No, that's got a good base under it.
You were gonna grind it, I thought the last time I read, and then just grade it out.
West Four or East Four?
East.
East Four.
East Four.
East Four, I'll talk to Floyd about it.
Um, the next one is the Meadows Road.
Where's the Meadows Road?
Off of Warm Lake.
Warm Lake Road.
Oh, got it. Yep, I know where you're at.
Okay, and if you get a chance, give me some length on that road too.
It's uh, one thousand five hundred and fifty.
They're only going back to, what is it, Pine that's the first right, right or something like that? White Pine, White Bark? White Bark?
Yeah, it goes past White Bark and goes up to the city limits is out there.
And the total bid on this one is a hundred and twelve thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-five cents. One, one, two, nine, four, six point four, five. Okay, and the next one is gonna be Ashton Lane. How many, how long is this road?
It's uh, six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five feet long.
Six thousand, three hundred and thirty-five.
Correct.
A little over.
That one's by twenty-two.
Glad you brought those.
And this is uh, again, three inch mat, twenty-two feet wide.
Yep.
Pulverize the old asphalt. Total bid is three hundred and ninety-one thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars and twelve cents. Three, nine, one, two, five, five point one, two.
How far does that take that back up that road, Jeff?
Uh, it takes you to the big Y at the bottom. Basically all the way across the flat.
And the last one is Loomis Lane. How long is this road?
Yeah. It's uh, three thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Thank you.
And also twenty-two foot?
Yep, same thing, three inch mat, twenty-two feet wide, pulverize the old asphalt. This bid is two hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine. Two, five, two, seven, two, nine.
I come up with one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one oh nine oh seven.
Second, let me write that down. Say that again, Sherri.
I come up with one million, two hundred and fourteen thousand, one oh nine oh seven. Is that, you re-add it, cause I was doing it as I went, so. That, yeah?
One, two, one, four, one oh nine. Okay, yep.
Wow, okay. Cool, I'm multitasked and I got it.
Yeah, I started and then I pushed the wrong button and then I lost track. Um, so that puts us a little bit over. What was the bid for Meadows? Cause that one there, we're still kinda up in the air over the manhole issue on that road.
Hundred and twelve thousand, nine forty-six.
How much?
Hundred and twelve thousand, nine forty-six, forty-five. I think it's better to be a little over than a little under personally.
Well, I'm being told I have to go in, dig the manholes up, raise them. Brian's, oh, I thought that was Brian. Seen the shining spot.
You should just park somebody by his.
Yeah, but then if we gotta raise them, if we gotta raise them, it's my problem.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't raise them until after it was all said and done. They're, they're gonna be in the way for the mill and the mill can't, we're gonna, we're gonna just X and out those.
But if I gotta dig out a barrel and put a whole nother barrel section in, then I gotta dig out the whole section of pavement.
You're right. So it'd be smart to do it again beforehand so you could compact them.
Yeah, and then leave it low. And then go up from there. But there's an eighteen inch minimum standard for the first step into a ma- manhole. So you got round barrels that go up, they're usually anywhere from six inches to four feet tall. And the top one's tapered.
Mm-hmm.
So if that, if there's already grade rings on that top piece that equal eighteen inches and we raise the road another three or four inches. And I gotta dig that tapered barrel out to put on another round barrel and then put the tapered barrel back on top. I'm being told it's my problem.
Isn't the impact area or actual county?
Probably the impact area. But Payette Lake Sewer, we give them a easement to use our road to run their sewer lines in. I don't know. I've got Oki looking at it too, to see. Cause all other utilities, it's like, hey, we're gonna widen this road. We need the power poles moved back, your phone lines, they do it. What's the difference between a sewer line?
So this is just settled over time?
No, no, we're gonna raise the road up.
Raise the road?
Oh.
Three, three to four inches, depending on what we end up with there. And if that four inches raises that first step up to more than eighteen inches, we gotta dig down about six feet. Round it, put a whole new barrel section on and come up. And it's easier to do that before it's paved. If it's just grade rings, that's a piece of cake. We can just jackhammer out around it, pop the top ring off, put a couple of grade rings on it to bring it up to grade.
Mm-hmm.
That, that's the easy part. It's when you gotta dig the barrels out. It's pretty in.
That's pretty intense.
Oh, there he is.
Brad, what do you wanna do on that manhole cover on Meadows?
I don't know if he's even had time to look at it, except sewer line.
There's two on that one. Was there five?
Five. There's one that's off the side of the road, but.
So Jeff, do you want us to approve this pending final review on that? So you don't have to bring it back for an action item or?
That's.
Well, I'm assuming if you can't, if you gotta do that work and then we, we don't get it done, then we don't do Meadows Road.
Well, we don't wanna sign a deal for Valley Paving saying we're gonna do it and then cancel in October.
Right.
That wouldn't be fair. But we could do a pending final approval from a resolution for those rings. So that you don't have to bring it back and rebid anything.
Okay. Cause, cause if I gotta go do it, that's really gonna cut into my stuff I've got planned this summer. I hire a contractor, it's. We did all the ones up on Crescent Rim, which is the no, next road to the north when we rebuilt that when Curtis was here. We hired Lance Hess to come in and do it all. Just because we didn't have time to do it. But once again, there's money I didn't budget for.
How much are you over with all these now?
About that amount. About a hundred and. I budgeted one point two, but I've spent a little bit out of that. I'd have to go back and look for what, but.
Forty-two hundred dollars.
I budgeted one point two.
What do you want us to do? You want us to hold Meadows and do the rest?
That sounds good if we can, you guys know more about this than I do to approve it, pending certain things. Um, I just don't wanna lock Chris into, hey, we're gonna do this and then all of a sudden he goes in to pulverize it and then I'm.
Right.
Well, and even if it's the end of your budget cycle, I mean, that might be the October, you know, just keep it until last. So you're in next year's budget cycle. Put that in next year, but.
We gotta figure out who's responsible for the manholes first.
Sure.
Cause Payette Lake Sewer's pointing a finger at me and.
And you said there's, there's five holes, but you only have to do one?
There's actually six manholes, but one of them's off the road far enough it won't.
And you have to do all five, raise all five of them?
We, we're gonna have to raise them at least three inches.
I think we should hold this one.
I mean, it, it could turn into a fiasco. I mean, the pavement's, it's getting to where it's starting to get pretty thin. But I, I, I would feel better holding that one until.
Yeah.
Till I can figure this out. And then, I mean, if need be, we'll put it, put it on for next year.
Let's do that. Okay, so then I need a motion to approve it for the rest of them. Ashton, Clear Creek, Loomis, West Four, East Roseberry and Pro. Well, we're not doing Profile Creek. Let's.
Let me get you a dollar figure then that we're approving.
That's five roads.
We're approving, okay. So Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the bids for Valley Paving for Clear Creek, East Roseberry, West Four Lane, Ashton Lane and Loomis Lane for a total of one million, one oh one, one sixty-two point sixty-two.
What was that num-? Oh, you're re-adding, double checking.
One million, one oh one, one sixty-two point sixty-two.
Sure, number's right. Cause didn't we take off a hundred, hundred and twelve thousand?
Yeah, it was one million, two fourteen, one oh nine before.
Two fourteen. Oh, yeah, yeah. Hey, we got a motion, man. A second?
Second.
Just a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I motion carries.
If you can, Jeff, I've driven on that road. There is, I mean, we're definitely getting the point. We need to do some work on it, but.
Yeah.
So if we can get it in this year, get it back to us and.
Guess that's it for that one.
What else you got, Jeff?
Um, just a couple of quick updates. We've brought up camper pads for temporary permanent employees, whatever. Um, one of my guys brought up the old chicken house, which old timers know what the chicken house was up by our pit.
Good lane?
On Good Lane. Where we, where we burned the house down up there. We've got sewer, power and water.
Nice.
Right there. So we could probably get.
I have a CUP.
Or pads in there or something. But we gotta talk to him because he owns the property right next to us and behind us.
We've gotta get approval on a CUP, but.
Yeah, and it's just something to think about. I, I never even thought about that.
Good idea.
Yeah.
So why do we need, why do we need approval from those around us? I mean, it's just a C, it's a CUP, so all neighbors.
I don't, I'm just joking, cause he's standing right here behind me.
Got it. Okay.
Jeff, can we do more than one place?
Uh, that's the only place up there that's flat right now?
No, I mean, can two or three hook into that same sewer and water system?
That's something we'd have to check, cause it, who knows? It might be a two fifty-five gallon drums in the ground to sold us that house was. I have no idea. We can pipe it over to his, over to Oki's septic, it's.
It'd be a lot less expensive to put septic in there than to have to create new stuff.
Right.
Maybe we could upsize the septic as need be and.
But I don't know. Yeah. But there's plenty of power there. We got.
We've already got a well.
Water there. So it's something to think about and we'll talk about it later this summer or whatever.
We'll talk to Sinda and see what we need to do to get on a CUP. You're gonna have to have CUP for it, so, you know, get on her agenda so we can get doing on it. I think it's a great idea and not take advantage of an existing.
Build a six-story apartment complex up there.
Good, but that takes a lot longer.
Now he's getting worried.
Um, real quick, couple of other things. East Side Drive Bridge is moving again. Um, they're opening the road up this week. Start getting it dried out. So I'm really pushing them for Memorial Day. They have thirty days of work.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Doug.
If they get the road opened up and dried out, enough to get that giant crane in there with all the counterweights and everything. It might be pushing up, but I kinda put a small timeline on them of. Trans plan, we're not gonna have enough time to talk about the transportation plan today. So I don't know if you guys wanna do something at the end of the day during your.
When do we approve that plan? Is there a deadline?
No, it's a draft right now and I've got a lot of changes in, in mind.
Let's do a work session in another, next week or whenever we can get it on an agenda and spend an hour or two on it.
Okay.
All of us together. I think that's appropriate.
Let's do that, cause we're running short today.
We paid extra to take it to the community. I think the community should.
Take it to the community till it goes through us.
Right.
I understand that, but I don't think that we approve anything until we take it to the community.
Right, right. Yeah, we won't approve anything till everything's said and done and all the changes have been made.
We can put our changes in without an approval and, but I think the community deserves the right to talk about it before we approve anything.
Right. Well, that's what, if Doug can get us on next Monday for an hour or something, that'll probably cover it.
Can you email myself and Gabby and we'll make sure that we find the time and it works.
Yep.
Let's give it a listen now, Doug.
I think he's probably listening.
Hey, what else you got?
Um, met with Perpetual last week. Um, they're gonna start their construction phase this summer. By the winter of twenty-four, twenty-five, they will, their plans are to take over Warm Lake Highway.
Jeff, when are we gonna sit down and talk to them about Johnson Creek? I know we've had some discussion about that.
With Johnson Creek right now, they have a pilot program. They're gonna try some new stuff. It's called Lith Tech. Um, it's kinda like a crabs project. They're gonna get into the base just a little bit where they can. And they, they mix in this kind of a, it's a. What's the white word, right word? It's, it's their product. It's a. Nobody else could use it. Right, proprietary, proprietary, that's the word. Proprietary, proprietary, that's the word. They're going to try that on four or three, three places on Johnson Creek. One's going to be one of the steep hills. One's going to be on a sharp corner and one's going to be up top in that sandy section. Been in touch with the Forest Service. I gave them all the information on Lith Tech. And they're supposed to be kind of reviewing it to make sure it is environmentally friendly and. But this stuff here is supposed to go down like crabs. It's got like a, it's not Portland cement or something else in it that hardens it up. And they put a chip seal over the top of it.
So then what about, you know, the rest of the system, Warm Lake, all that? Are we going to bond for damage or?
We're working on that. Yeah, it it'll be, we'll we'll work with parametrics and, you know, they'll come up, do road calculations and look at the rutting and then. There's, there's hundreds of other mines in the country that are working on county roads and they all have these. Big bonding stuff. So at the twen- end of twenty years, they go back and reassess everything and they, you know, that's. Thirty-five million dollars or something and fix it.
So it's like cooperating agency, now is our time though, to get this in before approval.
Get what in?
Get any information into the Forest Service that we want included in their requirements. So you're talking outside of that, but if.
So the Forest Service really doesn't have anything to do with Johnson Creek except for if it's going to contaminate the water.
Fish Creek.
That's the only thing, I mean, that's a further road. That's our road. But anything happens, something major like this needs to go in front of them to make sure it's suitable for there.
However, we can.
I think all of us need to sit down with parametrics and with Perpetua and have this discussion because. Um, right now, honestly, we're kind of feeling left out.
Yeah, this this summer is going to start the big talks with parametrics and. Their, Perpetua is also using parametrics for all their road work. We got to make sure there's, they're not working with the same people I work with at parametrics, but got to make sure there's not any.
Did we make any comment during the open comment period? Because what what I'm asking, Jeff, is that. So Johnson Creek Road is going to be their road for three years until they get burnt log built, okay? So we should be requiring them to do certain things to Johnson Creek.
Oh, they will. Yeah, they're going to take it over.
Where is that in writing? Once they get an approval?
It will be. No, we're just talking right now. Yeah, there's nothing in writing yet.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, they'll have, they'll have it before June when we open the road up.
However, we've lost our opportunity as a cooperating agency to require that. And require anything that we wanted done on the roads during the approval process is what I'm hearing.
I don't think we've lost that opportunity because it was brought up when we met with them individually here, what, last year?
Yeah, it was last year.
And it's like, well, I kind of.
We threw out all sorts of stuff, Adam, paving the hills and.
Right, right.
All this other stuff and that's what's kind of stemmed this because pavement's going to be horrible expensive and this other stuff's supposed to be a fraction of the cost and.
Well, if my thing is this stuff doesn't work, then what do we do? A year from now?
It's it's going to be their road. I mean, they're, they've got to keep it bladed. They've got to do something to it and mag chloride and calcium right now is either non-existent or it's.
What makes it their road?
Through an agreement.
Just like their contract.
Take care of it. They get approved by the Forest Service and they go, I already wasn't in that Forest Service agreement.
It's not going to be in the Forest Service agreement. It's going to be in our agreement, just like from Yellow Pine to Stipnite. We've been under agreement for ten years with them. We have a signed agreement every year. They maintain it. They plow it. They've laid it. They dust debate it. They, yeah.
Basing a lot on good faith.
I'm not basing nothing on good faith. Not until it's in writing. I don't trust anybody.
Yeah, so when it's, I mean, in three years, they have three-year contract that they'll be their road to take care of.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah. I think though that when you're doing these negotiations, this this settlement, this discussion with Perpetua and with Perpetua, there were or. Um, parametrics that were involved in that, just to see what kind of deal you got going.
Well, let's get them in here.
Yeah.
Um, I think we read that. You guys have the higher people's emails more higher than I got. Email them, tell them you want to hear the plan. More gladly come up here and talk to you.
We can do a half-day work session for a lot of that. I think Sinda needs to know what kind of CUPs are going to be coming forward as. The count from the county as far as housing and all that kind of stuff too as well and.
Yep.
I think that's all appropriate. You know, we've been kind of kicked down the road and now we're ready to go.
Yeah. All I'm dealing with the road. I don't have nothing to do with anything else. I'm not keep, I'm not keeping it from anybody. I mean, these aren't secret little talks I'm having with them.
No, I understand that. I'm not.
These are quick little twenty-minute, hey, this is kind of what we're planning on doing. This will be in the agreement, blah, blah, blah.
But one of us sits on that cooperating agency meeting every month. And those are the types of things that we can request at those meetings, but I can't do it without knowledge.
They should be telling you what's going on.
No, they.
They're not getting anything.
Oh.
I mean, all's we're getting right now is what information was given to the Forest Service. And what can be enacted as part of their approval process. And I thought the county was putting information in, requiring it. In the approval process, that's where your accountability comes from.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, yes, they want to be approved, but once they get approved, they can also just shrug as an agency and say, sorry. I'm not going to sign that anymore, even though we've been doing it for ten years. We did that with good faith. So if we really want to hold somebody accountable, it should have been done during this process.
What I would like, if it's all right with you guys, I would like you to, who's the road guy? What's his name? Perpetua's?
Kyle is.
Kyle, Kyle's moved up a long ways. He's quite a ways up now.
He's not the road guy anymore?
No, he kind of does everything back there. I've been, Jordan.
Would you be willing to set up a meeting with them?
I'll set up a meeting.
Set up a meeting, give us a couple of hours and we want to sit down and really get down into the weeds on this. And it's not that I don't agree with what you're doing, but I just want to know.
Right. Well, they should be keeping you guys in the loop. I didn't know that, I didn't know you guys weren't in the loop.
Yeah, we haven't been. Well, I've been trying to do the the cooperating agreement things, but it's kind of faded away.
Oh.
And maybe one or two people.
No, I'm going now, but they had, they had multiple agencies on last time.
Beginning. And there's the old good that we didn't award so that you can take that one back.
Thank you. No, I'll get ahold of Kyle and you can get ahold of his people and. We can get Oki in here and everybody else, so.
That'd be awesome.
Do a little round table and if they need to bring somebody in on Zoom or something, then.
Well, I want, you know, like I said, I think we need to see what we're going to need for CUPs for the county and there's a lot of things. Do you know, are they going to start building their Reekanoider facility in Scott Valley or Little Valley? Is that happening this year?
I have no idea.
They'll have to have their approvals first before they do any of that. And I, the last thing, the last month on the cooperating agency is they're headed for August, September. I think for an approval.
Chris, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If it does get approved, so I bet they don't build anything this year.
Their fuel requirements just have me baffled by just trying to fathom the amount of diesel that they're going to go through every week back there with the fuel trucks and.
Oh, yeah.
I'm just, just in awe.
Huge amount.
Huge.
So I'm fully, you know, I mean, I'm supportive of the mine, but if they're going to be using Johnson Creek, they're taking that much stuff back. We need some really strong requirements, not just them testing something on the road.
Right.
How are we going to protect our asset?
Oh, get them in here.
And I think that includes especially downtown Yellow Pine.
Yeah.
I know they kind of go around it, but then that's going to impact the town of Yellow Pine pretty big.
They do a lot of stuff for Yellow Pine already.
Mm-hmm.
How do you want to do this, Doug? Do you want to give me?
If you can reach out to them. Uh, and provide them with a few dates or if you want to reach out to our office and we can give you a few dates.
Okay.
And then provide that to them and then whatever date works, we'll get, make sure that we get it scheduled for an upcoming agenda for a workshop.
You need at least two weeks notice for something that long?
I mean, I think to be fair to everyone, if two weeks would be.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Okay, no, that's no problem. Two or three weeks out.
Great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get it rolling.
Appreciate you. Take care, bud.
Sheriff's Office having conversations with them at all?
Okay, we're going to move on down. Our next agenda item is an action item. Kinsey, come on up. This is a local, McCall Local Auction Option Tax Funding and Homeland Security Grant.
Yes.
Turn it over to you.
Okay, so the two action items, um, the first one is the McCall, McCall Lot Funding Proposal and that's for seventeen thousand for. Um, winter plowing and that is a grant that we've applied for about the last four years in a row. Um, so that's for seventeen thousand.
And that was for snow plowing, Old Francine, Brush?
Francine, Wallace, Westface, Brush Creek, Titus and Green Gate.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, I got it. All the park, okay?
Yeah.
That's what I was talking to Larry about. So you're asking us for permission to proceed for that request?
To submit it, yes.
So I'll make the motion that we authorize. Go ahead and move on the McCall Local Auction. I can't say that word, option tax funding.
I know, it's a.
I'll second that. Move in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I motion carries. Next one?
Awesome. The next one is the Homeland Security Grant for the Bearcat. This is going to be for three hundred and seventy thousand. I need to change the grant currently. It says three hundred thousand, but we upped that. Um, with a quote we received. We're going to go for three hundred and seventy thousand. It might come in a little bit under that, but we're looking at that. There's no match, which is awesome.
And this is a groomer?
Nope, the Bearcat is for the Sheriff's Department.
Oh, that's that, that's that big up armored thing. What are we talking about here? This is new to me.
You, you didn't. Oh, you weren't here.
You want to hear on that one?
Is it like an armored vehicle or something? Okay.
Yeah. I'll fill you in.
What would you like to note? I think the last questions. Um, that I picked up last time were, was the maintenance and the use and availability of it. So I have those answered for you hopefully.
Oh, Elle wasn't here when the.
It's, it's a Homeland Security Grant, sir, that we we picked up off, um, off the. The Homeland Security Site. Um, there, it's a hundred percent grant through, uh, through them for an armored vehicle. Yeah, at this time we have zero armor. We have zero armor available to us. Um. Uh, the hotel incident, the Adams County shooter incident, um, we handled all those without armor and nowadays that's just not.
I think this is awesome, man. This is like a four-wheel drive, go about anywhere kind of.
I have a, if if the, if the PowerPoint's available, I can throw a picture of it so you can visualize it.
Um, maybe just send it to me.
Okay.
Just send it to me.
It's, it's also equipped, um, for evacuating, um, hanging litters in it and fire can use it for evacuating, um, injured people. Also, it's, it's a dual.
And no match?
No match.
Huh.
And it would be available for response for McCall also, it would be the greater region, right?
Yeah, I could, I, um. It's scheduled out. Can I, want me to go over the maintenance first that I came up with real quick for you? It's scheduled out, um, through, um, Ada, Adams, I'm sorry, Ada County. And through Bearcat themselves, they said schedule out about two thousand per year for maintenance on it. Um, that's for replacement of, uh, the ballistic, uh, glass. It's going to deteriorate over time. And that type of stuff, by then you'll, you'll be able to replace the glass, but even keeping it, our intention is to keep it in the EOC and that'll keep the, the sun off of it and, and. And prolong the life of the glass in it. Um, McCall Fire already has an employee there that's trained to work on their heavy equipment. He can do, he's been to Pierce who makes fire trucks. Um, Pierce is the company that makes fire trucks. He's been to their maintenance program. He can do a lot of the maintenance until at the point it needs a lift. And at that lift, um, there's the, they bring their fires, uh, trucks down to Star. There's a lift down there that's capable of lifting, uh, twenty thousand. Plus, this vehicle's about seventeen, uh, it's going to come out to about nineteen. It's going to be right on the edge of that twenty, twenty thousand. Um, cap- uh, capability of the Star Lift. Uh, the road department does not have a lift capable of doing that. And then Pierce Fire Equipment also has a mobile service that responds up here to service. Um, Cascade or Donley or McCall Fire on their fire trucks too. That, that, so we have three options on the maintenance of it.
Awesome.
Um, the use of availability of it, surrounding law enforcement, fire agencies will have access to use this vehicle. It would include surrounding counties also, and my intention would be to, uh, establish MOUs with those surrounding counties. We would always be in control of the vehicle. We'd send if Boise County or Idaho County requested that piece of armor. We would send two trained deputies with that armor and remain with that armor the whole time it's there and then shuttle their tactical units around how need be. Um, there is no special license, uh, needed to to drive this vehicle. Um, so we would, our intention would be to, uh, to train all of our deputies, plus the jail personnel to, uh, fill in. When we need drivers for it and and an additional helper to go out on, on these calls. Um. Called ISP the other day. They still have no capability and no, no armor capability whatsoever. Um, that's who responds to our barricades and tactical situations. We've requested Ada County. We've requested Nampa. We've requested all those other agencies with armor down there. They will not send it. They don't want it leaving the valley, which is understandable.
Who responded on the hotel shooting? Wasn't that?
ISP with zero armor.
Well, that was ISP.
Yes.
Did we get charged for all that? Didn't think there was a charge. Somebody asked me, I said, I don't know.
And ISP responded with, uh, we tried to get Nampa to send their armor up for, uh, Adams County shooter. He had an AK. Um, at the time and they refused to send their armor up also. Um, so it puts us in a boat of of having zero protection for the citizens and the officers out there on incidents like that. Um. We're, uh, we already have the training set up for the vehicle through, uh, offers through Ada County Squad and Idaho National Laboratory is also. Uh, offered to, um, give training on the vehicle. I've been around those vehicles for twenty-five years. I know what they can do. Uh, I know that they save lives, um, personally and, um, any questions?
Does it have a winch on it?
It will, yes.
I was going to say, make sure you get the bells, some of the bells and whistles for that.
It has, it'll have, it'll have run flats and and, uh.
It's like buying a tractor without a bucket.
Right.
One oh four Howard, sir.
Right.
There we go.
We had just asked what the long ongoing expenses could be for the county before we approved this, just so that we knew what, what we were signing up for, even though there's no match. There's going to be some kind of expense, two thousand a year is very minimal.
It's on an F five fifty frame. It's the Ford six, seven diesel that's in it, um, and it's just oil changes and. And the the two thousand per year for the maintenance, they said by the time it needs tires and stuff like that, then you'll have the money to replace the tires.
When my son was at Boise PD, he, he said, yeah, they got a Bearcat. He's, that's an awesome piece of equipment.
Okay, so this is, sounds great to me and then I appreciate your, uh, input about, you know, it's hard to get somebody else to bring theirs up.
They won't.
That's going to help us sell it to the public. So when they see this on the Fourth of July parade, they're all going to go, oh my God, look at that.
I don't know.
What did we spend money on?
What are we doing?
We've asked and they've, on, on two or three occasions and they won't send it up.
I would move that we approve the Homeland Security Grant application for a Bearcat in the amount of three hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Move in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. Okay.
Awesome. And then other than that, I just have two other grants I'm working on. So if you guys have anything you want me to work on, send it my way because right now I kind of have a little bit of a lull. Um, the two other grants I'm working on, in case you're interested, is the EDA loan for the road department buildings and then a daycare grant.
I was going to ask you, I'm sure you had mentioned about there was a grant for that road to build and if you were looking into that, so that's good.
Um, the tough thing is there is a fifty percent match, so we're looking at about three point five million total, so one seven, one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand are matched for the building department.
That means we save one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, we just saved the whole time.
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Good.
That's what I'm going on.
Did you see anything on the S Bridge as far as any of those grants being able to help us with the S Bridge?
No.
No.
I, I asked Jeff about the last grant you sent me, um, if he has a project for that, but that wouldn't work for the S Bridge.
Okay.
That's for safety.
Okay, thank you for your help.
Thank you. See you, Kay.
We thought she was getting overwhelmed.
Hey, we're going to go right on down our list. We're just about out of time for lunch. These are all action items. The meeting minutes, April third. Everybody get a chance to look at those?
Yeah, I did a curse. I I did not go line item by line item this time. I just did not have time, so.
Is this the meeting I missed?
Yes, read them or not. I looked for basics on this one, but.
Okay, so I need a motion to approve these minutes.
I would move that we approve the meeting minutes of April third.
Second. Move in second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 I motion carries. Uh, we have an application in your packet for Ms. Jessica Nickerson for the Community Guardians.
That she's still willing to help.
What's up?
I love that she's still willing to help. We have good people.
We have great people. Jody and Candace both have just done phenomenal to keep up with that and I feel kind of bad because I'm supposed to kind of be involved with it, but like. They, they get it all done every time. I don't have to do anything, so thank you. I appreciate it. they, they get it all done every time. I don't have to do anything, so thank you. I appreciate it. So I'm gonna make the motion that we, uh, allow Jessica Nickerson to, uh, serve on the Community Guardian Board of, whatever you call it. The Board of Community Guardians. A second? Move the second all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye, motion carries. And then the last one, and I'm glad you're doing this, Sherry, is the, I think we should, uh, trademark our Valley County logo. I was on that webpage here a while back. Jeremy sent it to me and I just couldn't believe somebody had enough nerve to do that. And I thought, that's terrible.
We have found a little bit of information. So you cannot trademark a government's, uh, logo. There's an automatic implied reservation for that logo. However, what other, uh, areas have done is create an ordinance that actually prohibits use of the county's ord, uh, logo so that we can actually have an enforcement mechanism behind it. And that's the direction that I'm recommending that we go. You guys should have seen a, um, letter from Brian Oki.
Yeah, I got that right here.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I recommend we do this. I think even though we, it's an implied, um, reservation anyway. People are not supposed to use it. However, with this ordinance, we can actually move forward and then send a letter of cease and desist. And if they don't, then we can enforce it, so.
Is that a motion?
I so move.
Got the second that. Moved in second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, and then the very last one, we have about five minutes left. We have to go into an executive session for I D O Code seventy four, two oh six, one D, which is ended in charity. So I would entertain that motion. I'll make a motion that we go into the next session for seventy four dash two oh six, one D.
Second.
Move the second of my roll call, please. Thompson, aye.
Tom, aye.
As for guy Doug will be in at eleven fifty five. Candace, come on up or whatever you got.
Okay.
Chairman, one minute.